Good evening and welcome to the Monday, April 27th, 2015 School Committee Meeting. This meeting is live and being recorded. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Long Meadow School Committee maintains educational policies that foster continuous improvement by challenging and supporting all children in a safe and caring learning environment, enabling them to reach their highest potential and to become productive citizens. Through effective communication and positive relationships, the Long Meadow School Committee will make informed decisions in the best interest of the students, the schools, and the Long Meadow community. We, for once, don't have students here tonight to present, so we'll move on to correspondence.
We have two pieces of correspondence. One from Ms. Ellen McKinnon dated April 13th, 2015 regarding redistricting and her endorsement of Plan A, and an email letter from Stephanie Jasmine dated April 16th, 2015 regarding redistricting and MCAS scores.
We'll move on to visitor comments. Any visitor comments tonight? State your name and address for the record.
Chris Papadopoulos, 17 Farmington Avenue. So I'll be brief. I just have a few points. I just want to make sure and get out there just to talk about it with everybody. After looking at the budget again, I cannot see how there can be any staff reductions that will reduce the budget and keep the class sizes the same or even close to the same. This is in regards to redistricting. I ask you please consider this and address this before making any decisions on redistricting. I know it's coming up pretty soon. Second is on the public forum. In the public forum, someone mentioned MCAS score, so I actually took a liking to that. So I did a little bit of research on my own because I'm a numbers guy. So what I found was in 2003, when this occurred, moving students from Center to Blueberry, Blueberry's scores for ELA dropped by 14 percent, and the reading fell by 9 percent, and Center stayed relatively flat. This was brought up in the redistricting committee last week, and it was quickly dismissed under the presumption, I believe, that there was a change in the format from MCAS that year. But, you know, the fact that Center stayed flat, you know, clearly, redistricting has somewhat of an impact, and I just ask that everybody thinks that through when we go through this process. You know, given the small window that we have, I want to make sure that, you know, this is a topic that is addressed, and that we consider this when we are looking at this redistricting. And then, third, I'm dismayed with the fact that the redistricting committee chose to ignore what the public had to say in regards to signed petitions and grandfathering all current students and families. This also was dismissed relatively quickly in the redistricting meeting last week. The moderator started that forum, which is something that stuck with me. This is your town people, and those words are why I've been sitting in these meetings for the past two months. So, the people spoke. Please listen to them when you're considering this redistricting. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Aaron Mather, 101 Converse Street, impacted parent. So regarding the last redistricting meeting held, I guess on the 16th, following the public forum, left, you know, a lot to be desired. I think when we talk about process, I think, again, you sort of left yourself open to a lot of criticism. In the weeks since that time, a number of parents impacted and otherwise, mostly otherwise, came up to me and said, "Sorry." Because I think what they witnessed, if they saw it on TV or they were there, was what we all felt that day, which was an injustice. You know, that we could spend months talking about how to come up with a better solution for a problem, only to come back to the original plan as previously stated, is really disheartening for a lot of families, but really, it was laughable. I mean, I've never been in an environment where the first solution is the best one. So, and it's also sort of reinforced another belief that I've heard before, that this decision was made long ago, and that everything else that's, you know, followed since then was really for our own listening pleasure. So, you know, I'm not really sure what to expect next. If there'll be, you know, constructive thinking about what the next steps are, but, you know, my gut sort of tells me that things will sort of carry on in the same fashion they have as they started. And, you know, with that in mind, I wanted to remind the committee that it's still on the hook for a few things. One of them is a long-term solution, so that we're not back here again in five years' time, which would certainly impact me with my second child. I think it also needs to acknowledge and openly address how it will treat the families with legitimate grievances. We're talking about children with special needs who are not our models of resiliency, but doctors note or otherwise, those families need to be taken care of. Last, but not least, there are, you know, a number of transition ideas shared by Principal Hutton, many of them very nice, and I'd just like someone to, you know, go on the record and say, you know, "This is what we will do for the children with the full support of the administration." Not what we could do, but what we will do without fail, because, you know, failing on that front would really, that would be unforgivable. So, I hope to hear more constructive thoughts, but we will see. Thanks.
Hello. Shaun Anderson, 49 Farmington Ave. On April 13th, I attended the school committee meeting and voiced concern with the management of the superintendent by this board. I would like to thank the school committee for attending the public forum. I really respect the fact that you were all out there hearing the same message that we all heard in the public and voicing, you know, we had an opportunity to speak to you directly, so that was really, really good. I'd also like to thank the superintendent. I thought you did a great job with the data. I think some of that data was very concise. It showed thoughtfulness. It had all of the elements that we were looking for as parents, as taxpayers, as folks in the community, to think that this process was well thought out and had the data to support it. Because for the initial meetings, they did not, we did not see that level of data and that level of rigor. So again, thank you for that. I do feel that data should have been made available to that redistricting committee certainly prior to the first meeting, so that they could be informed at that first meeting. It seemed like folks collectively, not just folks that were, you know, sort of added to balance the different neighborhoods, but also everyone to be able to have that data. So as a resident of Long Meadow and a father of four children in public schools, I'm concerned with all the town, all the schools, excuse me, the elementary, middle, and high schools, because I have small children and one that are in middle school as well. Today, I have kids in middle school, which I've been trying to understand sort of what the overall plan is for the community, things like the statement of interest, the redistricting, all affects all of our, you know, my kids specifically, and certainly all of ours in the concern. I'm concerned that many of these plans have not had the involvement of the full school committee, and so I'm kind of wondering what level of rigor each one of you, the seven elected officials, and those that represent various stakeholders have been involved in this process, and I'll explain why in a second. I'd like to share what I feel. After the first redistricting committee meeting, a few of the audience members had met at a local place to sort of talk about what had happened, and I ran into you, Mr. Clark. We exchanged some questions, and you made a statement that was very concerning, and you indicated that there was somehow a link between the redistricting and a plan for the middle school, and that was the first time that I had heard that there was any such connection. And so I reached out to Mr. Clark via email. He responded with a great email, really, again, well thought out, certainly showing that there had been this link to talk about, "Well, we're not going to do the redistricting of the middle school until next year," and had some stats over the number of headcounts, number of incoming sixth graders that come into Glenn Brook and Williams. I have a copy of that email, which I can forward to you if you haven't seen it. And so, I can actually read one of the more concerning parts, and this is, again, is your email, Mr. Clark, from February, I'm sorry, from Friday, March 20th, and it reads, "Obviously, you are aware of the enrollment disparities that exist between schools. The same is true with the middle school. In the past few years, the incoming sixth grade class at Glenn Brook have been around 95, and Williams have been around 125. While this may not seem a lot, Williams, as you are aware, is much smaller, so it's harder to accommodate that many students in one grade. So the need to balance the schools is important from both a pedological and teaching load perspective." Forgive me if I mispronounced, didn't pronounce that right. "In order to make the transition work, we propose to redistrict the elementary schools, which will accomplish a lighter load at Blueberry and allow us to redraw the middle school map in a balanced way. While we're not doing this all at once, would mean splitting up teams of teachers, which right now are effective, but the plan we hope to implement the following year." So this seems to show that there is a clear link between what was going to happen in Blueberry, removing those 60 or 80 kids, and also some plan for later on, next year, to redistrict what I'm assuming Glenn Brook and Williams. That's a concern, because, again, first time I had heard about it, and I think as a community, we have a right to understand, and I think you as a board have a right to understand that as well. Now, if each one of you fully understand this and you've vetted it through public and, you know, processes, then forgive me for not being more informed until this date. But one of the concerns that I have is, I actually have three. Numerous times Superintendent Doyle indicated that she had been working on redistricting, and the words you used were "behind the scenes." That scares me. I believe in open and transparent government. That does not feel open or transparent. This is a concern. Second, Michael Clark's email outlines a very clear plan, the hopes to implement redistricting at the middle school. You mentioned the word "we." I don't know who "we" is. Certainly "we" doesn't represent me having children in Blueberry Zone A, as well as having children in Williams Middle School as well. So that's a second concern. Is it the school committee? Is it the parents? Is it the PTOs of these areas? I just don't know. And then the third, there's been very public discrepancies between Mr. Arz, Ms. Grozky, Ms. Robinson, and Mr. Clark regarding enrollment and redistricting committees. No one seems to agree whether there was a meeting or not a meeting, or whether it was a quorum or not a quorum, or was a working group. And again, I think that speaks to the issue of transparency, to understand exactly what is happening. So what you may not be aware of is I submitted a public records request, and that hopes was to really understand what the process was that you followed, so that we, the parents, the taxpayers, the community, could better understand what process you have, because it's clear from sitting on this side of the table, we just don't know. And so I'm asking each one of you, how comfortable are you with sharing and being open, transparent to the community? Will you be willing to share those public records requests relative to redistricting, the budget, all the things that we're talking about, because I believe in open and transparent? So please, each one of you, please consider that. Sincerely, Shaun. I also have copies for each one of you, if you'd like to see them.
Good evening. Alex Mitreski, 68, Ellington Street, father of two children in Blueberry Hill that are currently impacted by the redistricting. I wanted to first off start tonight's discussion with just thanking, and I regret that Ms. Robinson is not here tonight, because last time, when I spoke two weeks ago, she let me speak for a little bit over the allotted time that usually is, and I just wanted to say my gratitude and appreciation. I think she's had a hard time balancing letting the public speak and also moving you along with the process, and I thought that was really nice of her. She didn't have to do it, although even Mr. Clark would tap in on the shoulder and saying, "Let's move on, time's running out," but she let me speak, and I just wanted to acknowledge that that was really nice of her. And secondly, I also want to acknowledge, again, Mrs. Robinson, she's been part of the data subcommittee, and she has worked really hard to get as much data as quickly as possible. I've gotten a lot of emails from her on Friday nights, on Saturday nights, so she has done as much as she can, again, to balance all of this and provide as much information, and we do clash on these issues often, but what's fair is that we need to give credit when credit's due, and I just wanted to thank her for that. So hopefully she can see the recording. Going back to the previous discussion, when we sort of spoke last time, Mr. Fitzgerald sort of pointed out and said, "Why are you so attacking Mrs. Doyle that she's very professional in her work?" And I don't doubt that, but I just wanted to point out a few things that I've sort of, we have come across that, to me, just makes it difficult, and somehow this redistricting has become secondary, and the lack of transparency primary. So, for example, and I like facts and really discussions of accuracy, April 10th, the superintendent sent an email saying how the chief and her favor Proposal A, because that's the safest. My understanding is that, you know, in that email, she outlined Proposal A, C, and E. My understanding is the chief never saw those proposals, actually never saw Proposal E, A, B, C, and D were being discussed, but not E. So it was just a different discussion, different issues that came forward. My discussion with police representatives is that we will make any plan safe, doesn't matter which one it is. So when somebody starts saying that there is the safest plan, when I look at my child that currently has four streets to cross versus eight, I question that discussion then. During that meeting, and what the superintendent had admitted during the last redistricting committee, was that she had agreed to pay up to three crossing cars out of the school budget. That's something that just came as a new information, again, just pushing for that information, that's what, $20,000, that it's never published in any presentation to say this is the cost of implementing Proposal A. So this is where it's just, parents get frustrated, because we have to be digging this information while other information comes up right away. And then, my understanding is she's been feeding some incorrect information to the reminder, to the point that now reminder has to put out or print out a correction from their article last week in the way that they have represented the statements that I've made. So these are the things that are just sort of building up the frustration, and that's where it's just difficult to sort of fight, I guess, against the machine, and just being the system, not the superintendent. And I'll just make another comment. The slide on the reduction of the enrollment that Ms. Doyle, and you guys will go through this today. So the slide shows that a qualified consultant that we've paid money shows that it's going to be a decline in enrollment by 100 children in five years. Well, Mrs. Doyle makes a remark, says, "Well, but I think enrollment's going to stay flat." I mean, that's just frustrating, because we've paid a consultant to tell us it's going to go down. They've analyzed, and Superintendent Doyle discusses how it's difficult that you have to analyze pregnant women in the town, real estate data, so they've come up with a educated and scientific outcome, and she says, "Well, I don't think enrollment's going to stay flat." That's unqualified comment, that it's just not fair to be made. I want to go back to the public forum. Leading up to the forum, I think that was a very important idea, and honestly, it was very uneasy going into the forum. I thought it was going to be very nasty, people are going to turn to each other, it's going to go very personal. We exchanged some information, emails with Ms. Doyle in terms of, can we cut some of the discussion, and she had made some arrangements to cut off any personal attacks, but what I saw was just a very good example of how democracy works, and after that meeting, I felt, "This is great." People came there trying to fight with their neighbors, but they realized that this is just a very rushed process. People have been put in awkward position, parents, you guys as well, trying to bulldoze this process through, and all sort of came back to three themes they keep repeating: get rid of Plan E, which we did, grandfather children, and then also how we need to pause this process, so there's not been professional help to develop the right solution. And Superintendent Doyle made a few phone calls, but I'm not sure how that, to the extent that we can not really go back to that and look up and really find the professional help that can really find the right solution, that we're not here again in five years. So, the other, the last piece is that lack of transparency, and we've talked about it, Mr. Clark, you said, "There's been process, there have been meetings since October." Well, to me, it's appalling that the school committee had a three-person subcommittee, Mrs. Gerrard, Mrs. Grozky, and Mrs. Robinson. They met in October. Mrs. Gerrard didn't attend it, and that committee never met again. So we need to say whether that was true or not. During the redistricting committee, I think we concluded that that's true. They never met again. Not only they never met again, they were never informed of any of the analysis that you will see that happened sort of behind closed doors. And when we ask, "Well, who met? Who ordered the maps? What was this discussion that seems like it's an elaborate process?" But I question, it's, you should be able to look out, look and find what meeting took place. Who were the attendees? How long was the meeting? Was it just passing a hallway and saying, "Order some maps, look at Elizabeth Circle, look at this street?" That's the issue, that it looks like it's an elaborate process, sort of vindicate that there was a process, but seems like Ms. Grozky, for example, the first time that she heard anything back from a district thing was when she got a letter to edit the letter that was going to go out on February 25th. And those are the frustrating facts, that there's a lot of stuff behind. So that's where redistricting becomes secondary and lack of transparency becomes primary. So last point is, Ms. Doyle has apologized several times for some of the things that she wished she could have done right, and thank you for that, to acknowledge that, and we all make mistakes, but that sort of shows that this process is sort of flawed, and we need to hit a pause and figure out what's the best way forward. Because if we just sort of apologize, but we don't do anything about it, then it's just, we're going to be making a mistake over mistake over mistake. So I think that the committee should really consider that and figure out a way how to make this process better and not rush through it and just bulldoze through a solution. Thank you.
Any other comments? How are you?
Hi. Maureen Ryan, 76 Roslin Terrace. I am part of Plan A, and I came tonight just because I've been coming to all the meetings, and I feel like we started with one idea, and we had a lot of discourse that has been put to the side, and we're back to the same plan. So I don't feel like it's been handled well, that the community's voices have been heard, and action has been taken towards the voices. We had a chance to speak. I'm surprised with another opportunity to speak tonight, and I'm pleased for that. I, as much as anyone else, feel like I want this to be finished and a decision to be made, but I also want the right decision to be made for the kids and the community overall, because ultimately, that's what this town is built on. I came here for the schools. I grew up in Amherst, another great community, but I would hope that we can take some time to think it through and make sure that decision we make is a good decision for everyone. I don't think the response of the team has been effective to the voices and the different varying opinions offered. I don't really like talking at this meeting. It makes me uncomfortable, but I feel like we went through a lot, and we're back to the square one, which feels wildly frustrating. The redistricting team has been reorganized many times, so I think we see the need to move forward in a different way, but not doing it. So I would like to see some action taken on the survey that was sent out. I did answer the survey, so I was happy to see that come out. I'd like to know what happened with that data, if we know yet, and, yeah. Take some time to really make sure we're making the right decision, because aside from the feelings, we want the kids to be successful learners and follow their path to be successful in this community as well. Thank you.
Ms. Jasmine, how are you?
Stephanie Jasmine, 123 Englewood Road. My children are not affected by the redistricting per se. At the last redistricting committee meeting, a letter I had written to the committee was discussed, where I had brought up a significant drop in MCAS scores at Blueberry Hill following the last redistricting and an influx of students into that school. As briefly discussed at that meeting, I agree that the drop in MCAS scores cannot be directly attributed to the redistricting, as no formal analysis was conducted. With that said, however, such a large and significant drop in MCAS scores, if nothing else, should make people think about what could happen when a school is stressed, and whether Center School has the infrastructure available to receive 70-plus students at one time. Provided Principal Hutton has enough time before the school year ends, I am certain that she will be able to do a beautiful job helping the children transition from Blueberry Hill to Center School. What I'm most afraid of is whether she will be given the staff, regular education, and special education support staff and specialists. She needs one she knows the individual profiles of the incoming students. On page 52 of the FY '16 budget, you can see that 2.7 positions were eliminated from Blueberry next year for this redistricting, but that Center School has a big zero next to it, meaning that no new teaching positions were added there for next year. What that indicates to me is that Center School enrollment will increase next year, but the Center School teaching staff will remain the same number as this year, with Blueberry staff coming over to Center, but only to fill the vacancies caused by retiring teachers. Based on the school website staff listing, which may or may not be accurate, Blueberry Hill appears to have more reading specialists, more resource room teachers, and more educational assistants than Center School. When we talk about equality between the schools, all three elementary schools have different numbers of support staff and specialists, while swapping the only one to have a listed math specialist and a math tutor, and I can only imagine it's based on school need. Problem right now is that there doesn't appear to have been a thorough analysis of what the new need will be for Center School next year. Students will be coming from Blueberry Hill with specific educational needs requiring specific specialists, support staff, and teachers. If Principal Hutton finds that she needs more teaching or support staff based on student profiles, will she be granted them? Where will that staff come from? Will it cause an increase in the budget? Or will all Center School students have to make the best of it until the following year? I heard Superintendent Doyle speak about adjusting teachers for class sizes in the summer, but what happens if we're adjusting for both class size and specialist? Where does that money come from? Will there be resistance to giving Center School another speech and language pathologist or reading specialist if there is a large influx in children needing those services? I understand that there's a large space issue at Blueberry Hill, and part of the immediacy of needing to move children right now is the threat of a reported civil rights violation and having too many children receiving special education services by different teachers in the same space. My question with this is, why are we just hearing about this now? And how could we have ever let this happen and get that far? I wrote a letter to the school committee recently regarding the inactivity of SEAL this year, SEAL being the Special Education Alliance of Long Meadow and the Special Education Parent Advisory Council required by law for the district to have. As I wrote in my letter, "There has not been one SEAL meeting this year, and yet many special education initiatives continue to take place without any representation by the special education community, redistricting being one of them. Increasing special education programming in a school where there is not space and thinking about it afterwards, when a potential for a civil rights violation may exist, is very concerning. Forming a redistricting committee where children with disabilities will be moved from one school to another without parent representation from the special education community on that committee is also very concerning. It's my belief that there should be one parent from the special education community representing Blueberry Hill, and one parent from the special education community representing Center School on that redistricting committee, and I do not believe any further decision should be made until there is. In so many ways, I believe the process for redistricting has been flawed. Redistricting entails not only where to draw the line, but also how you support the infrastructure of the receiving school to ensure that all students' needs will be met, and that entails a thorough analysis from all, and from all accounts it has not taken place. It is my hope that my points will be discussed at the next redistricting meeting and prior to any further votes being taken on how to proceed with redistricting. Thank you."
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. School committee comments.
Can you send that to Diane Fisher?
And what, did you get it word for word?
No.
Do you mind sending that?
I'm making it on my own stuff.
I know, and I didn't think you did. That's why I just wanted, do you mind just sending that to?
I do, but I wanna
I don't wanna go first. I have a lot, but, you know, I
I do too.
You all, you all have a lot, but don't wanna go first?
No, I'll go first.
Okay.
Okay. I just wanted to address last school committee meetings, public comments, and also gossip outside school hours. I find it very disheartening and misguided that some people need to personally attack the school administration. I know this is a heated issue, but redistricting is in the best interest of all students at hand and there is no secret agenda and there is no personal gain. And to believe so is erroneous. All done.
Thank you.
Can, um, I have a couple of different questions.
Okay.
I've been at all of the subcommittee meetings, watching them. It was the first that I heard about the civil rights violation, possible civil rights violations. So I was gonna ask for a little bit of clarity on that. I don't really, not that I wanna bring attention to it, but
Ludlow had just, um, school districts are audited by the federal government and the state government on a regular basis. It depends on the auditor, what they look for when they come in. Ludlow had just been cited two to three weeks before our meeting for having a similar situation in their elementary school. And they were cited for being out of compliance. It hit the newspaper at that point, actually. It was two to three weeks before that we found about, out about it through the newspaper.
And do we, I know, I know that we've added a classroom at Blueberry in the last week, pretty much the last two summers that I've been here. So I know there's a lot of rushing around, but like
Like the last, like, class section?
A whole class, yeah. Well, we've added an entire teacher, so I figure that's a whole class, right?
Yeah, I'm just clear.
We've added special education staff at Blueberry as we've increased bringing students home to their, to district from out of district placement, as well as increased special education load at Blueberry. We've increased substantially the number of teachers, which is another reason why redistricting has to be done. That's all new within the past year.
So do we have anyone that, on staff, that is aware of all of these things? So that we aren't in violation of some other things? Like, I don't, I don't know what they would be.
We knew we were overcrowded when we had increased to four in a classroom. We knew that we needed to redistrict at that point when we started building our in-house programs and looking at that. So are we aware that we were out of compliance? We knew that it was time to do something because of the new special education teacher added at Blueberry and because of the programs coming home.
Okay. And I just wanted to ask another question. I know the census has said certain things projected over the next five years. We've had conversations about the last two years of census data. The census data over this past year and the year before was a little off?
Yes.
Am I correct?
It is. It has been off. The numbers were much lower on the census than what actually came into our kindergarten.
And that's why you're thinking the, the projection, the five years out from the census versus what you really think is gonna happen are two different things?
Correct. First of all, the census has been off. Second, NSDEC updates their numbers every single year. And each year, they make the enrollment a little bit higher, so that we're seeing an increase. The other factor which made me make that comment is that the economy's turning around. The past 10 years, we saw a 1% decline in population due to the economy. And the new, the new prediction is the economy's going to rebound by 1.5% in population. When you see those increases, you usually see the enrollment numbers turn around.
Unofficially, I see it in my neighborhood with the seven new kids under five in the last six months. And I can guarantee you, none of them have filled out the census yet. But, so, um, so I guess I'm hoping that we can move forward with whatever the solution is as soon as possible and move on to a solid transition plan. I'm a parent with a fourth grader that is in his third elementary school. So for me, transition is very important. As, as well as how the, I'd also wanna come up with something for how the parents talk about it at home with their kids. I'd like to see us give the parents something, some talking strategies, because it is hard for parents. It will be hard for them to address it with their kids. I moved around a lot as a kid. So for me, having to move my kids when I didn't want to in second grade was not as difficult for me as it was for my husband, who lived in the same house for his entire life. So the conversations at home are just as important as the transition plan that the schools are putting together. So I'm hoping that we can come up with some strategies that will be good in both situations. I've lived through it too many times. And I hear people saying that we are ignoring the signatures of the petitions that people are wanting to grandfather all the children. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't say we're ignoring anything. I honestly feel a little bit insulted when I hear that. The amount of time that I know that the redistricting subcommittee has put into it, I know that I have personally put into all of this. I see the committee absolutely reading everything and taking everything into consideration. I know I am doing the same because I know that ultimately it's gonna be the school committee's vote that is the deciding factor. The subcommittee has put in countless hours to work on this and is not an easy process. Problem is that we need to think about the entire student body. I've also heard from many parents and continue to hear from them when I'm doing things and I'm doing them around town, that we may not, that they may not be in an affected area, but they feel their kids are affected. Many have told me that they think services are not given to their kids in the last two years because of the overcrowding at Blueberry and their kids weren't bad enough to get into the service, you know, the special services. I even heard from one parent that mentioned she felt her child wasn't getting services last year that they needed because the school knew that she was paying for an outside tutor so that they took other kids instead. And, and I know that it, it, none of this is gonna be easy, but I feel like it just, something has to be done to address the student population at Blueberry. And so I just, I know that I, I am reading everything and I know that Diane is gonna be getting us all of the emails that we haven't been able to see as a school committee, that the redistricting committee has seen. We're not ignoring anything. We're listening to everyone, but, you know, when your kid wants something that you know is not right for them and you continually say no to them, you're, you're the adult in, in the house. You're, you are, um, you know what's right for your child. We're, we're trying to do what's right for all, I don't know, 3,000 kids in this, in this school district. So it's not going to be an easy, it's not going to be an easy decision and we haven't made a decision yet. But we are certainly not ignoring anything. I, I just, every time I hear that we are ignoring things and the amount of, I just, I feel a little bit insulted because I, we do put countless hours into reviewing everything and reading everything and thinking about it and discussing it over and over in my head. I think I watched the, uh, the public forum again last week while I was working on some things, so I could hear again what people were saying. I just, I just don't want people to think that we're ignoring them. We are listening and we are paying attention. It's not gonna be an easy decision. Go ahead.
You ready?
Sure. I'm trying to backtrack, but thank you, everybody, for coming because I, I know you said it's, it's hard to be up here too and I totally appreciate it. I was sat over there before I joined this committee and it's just not, it's, it's hard. I think I called it the hot seat. So thank you for sharing all of your info, all of your feedback. In terms of Kim, I wanna echo her. I have definitely been working around the clock. My kids will attest to it. They hate my computer, they hate my phone. Just trying to help make the right decision for everybody. The, the lawsuit that, you know, the civil rights thing, and there was mention of a lawsuit. And I'm concerned that there are things that we should be talking about in terms of what, even what we're doing regardless of redistricting at Blueberry. You know, I'm aware of the building, but if we were cited or we had violations, I wanna know about them. You know, so I think you spoke to it, but I'm, I'm, I feel ownership in this and I feel like I'm not aware of the things that you're saying and I would like to be.
Given what we've learned about the findings in Ludlow, we're in a very similar situation with four teachers in one classroom. We also have teachers that are in closets that have been cleaned out. So that if we do not redistrict and move a substantial number of students from Blueberry to Center, then we will be out of compliance. And I, I would say that we would be found in violation.
Are we in compliance now?
No, we are out of compliance. We, we have not been cited because we have not had our audit. Our audit is next year. So I would predict at that point they will find us out of compliance because we have the same setup that Ludlow had and they found them out of compliance.
And when were they here last? When did they?
They come every five years.
Okay. So we haven't been, there isn't anything I'm aware, that I'm not aware of that I need to be aware of?
No.
Okay. And the next thing is in terms of the budget. This was something I spent a lot of time over the weekend and the week. And I am concerned too, because I just can't make sense of, there have been a lot of questions, FTEs, 4.7. And I just, I, in running through my math, I don't see how we can cut any sort of staff and still maintain the same amount of service that we have. So if you can show me how, I just, I looked through everything, the PowerPoint, and if we get to it, maybe we can look at it more specifically there. But I, you know, I echo some of the concerns. And if we're not even attending to the kids at Blueberry right now, as you say, and we have more staff at Blueberry than Center, I hope that we're moving at least that much staff to Center and that we have it in our budget, so it's not a crisis when things fall over the summer and we get some more kids. I, I don't wanna be in an emergency situation, looking for staff, looking for money in the budget. I know I'm not, you know, but at the same time, I feel like I, I don't understand where it's in our budget and if it's there, I wanna see it. I'm feeling concerned, so that's
The principals and Tom have vetted this thoroughly and I'm happy next meeting to go through the details with you. They looked at what children, if children were moved in different scenarios, how much staffing would be needed. And those cuts were based on the fact that classes would be more balanced, that you would be able to do a reduction in staff. Again, with, with the summertime coming, we always have some flexibility in the budget to make changes where it is needed. But we're happy to do a detailed presentation next meeting before the redistricting discussion to show you exactly what they looked at, class sizes, how they would change in the scenario that, that may be recommended, may not be recommended, and show you what the impact would be different ways. They've been running more numbers to see what would happen if we grandfathered fourth and fifth grade, if we grandfathered siblings, et cetera. So we have all that data for you.
Okay. And when we go through the PowerPoint, that was kind of where I was looking at the math. So should I do it then when we have it up together or just, or can we break it down? Are you gonna do the presentation next week as well, or?
I'm going to do the presentation. I didn't plan on the budget component this week, so I can add that next, next time for you and give Tom a chance to pull up the numbers and all the data that we had when we made those decisions. We can, we'll be happy to do that for you. But you're, I'm also happy to look at what you have tonight and answer what we can.
Okay. Well, when we, if, if it's the same thing that you gave us at the redistricting committee meeting, then, then I can point it out there and it'll be easier. Okay.
Can I just ask, on that same topic? When we're, with the idea of redistricting, we're not changing, the class sizes, student-teacher ratio in K through five is not going to change?
No.
At Center School or Blueberry?
No.
Like, the district has always had an idea of, except for kindergarten, one through five, one teacher per 20, give or take one or two?
We try to keep it 18 through 21 at the elementary. We try and keep it even less at, at K1. But it, again, it depends on, on your enrollment. But that's what our target is, 18 to 21. And that will, that will, when they ran the numbers, that they were within the target. With, if we redistricted all but fifth grade in Plan A to Center School, then we're within our target.
Cause Center School and Wolf Swamp right now possibly having, they, they have under 20 per class?
I'm not sure of the numbers right now.
I know, I've seen that somewhere.
Yeah, I, I can again pull that up for you next, for the next meeting.
Well, I know, I'll ask Donna on our tour this week.
Let's see, going through, I, I, the last thing that I'm really concerned about, the middle schools. Because if, are we doing this again next year? And if we are, I wanna talk about it now, because first of all, if we have somebody whose child is gonna be redistricted now and then redistricted again next year, then that's really bad, in my opinion. But I, I, I think if there are plans for that, then I'm not aware of them and I wanna know about them now.
I think we've talked about, we have said that we'd look at middle school next year. As to what's going to be the outcome, there is no decision. There is a large cohort in the eighth grade currently, so there is an extra team of teachers. The enrollment drops off the seventh grade and the current seventh grade and the current sixth grade. We have to look at that, but that may be a more natural attrition that can happen there because the numbers are shifting. But again, we'd have to do the same thing. We'd look at enrollment, we'd look at the projections. But that was on the docket to look at that next year. And we could start that in September, have full, open discussions around that, show you the data. But no decision's been made about whether or not to redistrict. The decision is to look at it next year to see whether or not something needs to be done at that level.
But you're not gonna have a kid that's, like, cause all the fifth graders is being grandfathered. So you're not gonna have a child that's moving one year and then moving another?
I think my point is, if there, if there are, if there are kids that need to switch from Williams to Glenbrook, let's tell them now, you know, before they enter that school and they're a child that, you know, of these parents that might potentially be moved. I know if I was a parent, I'd wanna know that now and then potentially start them at the school that they were gonna be moved to, if that was in
What we can do is, once this process is done, we can start to look at that data and see what's going to happen. But we need to analyze what's going to be happening with the third, fourth, fifth grade. We have to see what happens with the current redistricting and what number's going to what school. And then we could, we could give you more of an answer and a guideline of what the fall might look like, once, once we finish this part of the process.
Okay. So we could do that immediately after.
Before school starts, because if there are any, I, I can certainly say as a parent myself, if I thought that one of my children was gonna start at one school for one year and then need to move in middle school when it's a really tough time to, you know, that's a socially difficult time that, then, you know.
If the decision is made May 11th, then we could start on that and get that to you by June.
And as, you know, can we do that as a committee versus, you know, administration only? I just, I think that's what we're supposed to be doing. Okay. Thank you. If any, I, I'm sorry, there was just so many comments and I wanna
I'm not gonna hold it.
Budget, the MCAS scores were concerning to me too. You know, I, part of me thinks that, you know, if we cut an administrator at Blueberry, that maybe we should consider supporting Center for a little while if we're moving 70 kids over there. That, that would, if, if there was any correlation, and it was concerning to me that Center stayed the same and Blueberry dropped so much. And if it was from an influx of students, can we be proactive and like, give that, you know, a year of cushion, an extra administrator, extra staff or something versus, you know? That, that was something that occurred to me that, you know, if we're gonna move all of these kids and some of them are gonna have a difficult time emotionally, educationally, and potentially, you know, the learners will be at different levels because they've been learning from different, you know, then extra support at the school is better than, you know, even keeping it status quo. I'd wanna be proactive with that, so.
There are two parts to that. There were already meetings going on with the principals and Susan talking about curriculum. The scope and sequence at the schools are the same. So what curriculum they actually teach is the same. What is different is how the teacher's presented. For example, Center has a science fair, Blueberry has simple machines. So the principals have been asked to look at that and talk about, are there any of those activities, the way they teach it, should there be more continuity in this move? I think particularly for the Blueberry students, it would be difficult not to do the simple machines. That's something that they look forward to. So that's something that the principals are discussing with Susan right now. The second piece is looking at IEPs. Every child on an IEP, it's an individual education plan. That needs to happen at the table, one-on-one. So if you're in an IEP, that needs to be discussed with the team, what the best placement, what the best plan for that child is. That would be very different and unique because by law, they're guaranteed to begin the best educational, least restrictive environment. And if it would impact them, I think we heard from a parent whose child has a hearing disability. There, there, every case will be looked at individually. But we are looking at curriculum. Again, the last time, there's, there's been five years of curriculum work going on, building continuity among the schools, where we have that scope and sequence down, where we have, we're working on common assessments, we have common math assessments we're looking at right now so that we can help determine the program. So I would say that we're in a better position to redistrict right now and have common experiences at schools, but there and have common experiences at schools, but there still is the broader question that the principals are working on right now. What about those things that the kids love? How can we make sure those experiences happen at both schools, so that the kids who are transitioning don't feel like they're missing something? I think if you look at each of the schools, they do outstanding work, they have outstanding traditions and outstanding things within their curriculum that they're all proud of. There are differences, but we do believe in teacher discretion, we believe in teachers creating curriculum, and that's what makes school very exciting. We believe in sharing best practices as well, so that's what we'll be doing right now. Here are the best practices. Are there any things we should carry over that would make it easier for the children at this time? But those discussions are underway.
Okay. I mean, I just, you know, I know I sent you an email, and I'm concerned about, you know, as a teacher, you have kids that have been learning the Engage New York, which, that was really hard for me as a teacher to understand how to help my child with. And it's very different than anything I've ever seen before. And the kids will be all combined in the same room, and some of them haven't had that, because Engage New York, let's use a first grade, you know, was going on all year in first grade, but not at Center. And then you put those kids in the same room, and that teacher is going to struggle with kids that have learned from, in one way. And the concepts, they're getting to the thing, but it's very different. I pay attention to this every single day, and it's, again, I was good at teaching math, and it's hard. So I just fear that the teachers are going to struggle, because the learners are in different places, and then that's going to take the overall impact, you know, the overall room in a different place than if they were. So again, the more support we can give to that school, I have to push for that, and I am, I am still concerned about the curriculum, so.
With the math, the teachers have been using different programs, so I think Blueberry in particular tried to look at Engage New York, Eureka it's now called. And the other school's a pilot in Eureka right now, Engage New York, same program. They're also doing Go Math and Expressions. So throughout the year, they're having different programs. Some are using Investigations, so it is a pilot year where different things are done. I think what the teachers have told us, that is, if it's difficult and students aren't getting it a certain way, they've re-taught it in a different way or from a different material. So I hear fully what you're saying, because some students have been exposed to more of Engage New York than other schools have, but other schools may have been spending more time on other pilots. So it's been a different experience in how the math has been taught, but they've agreed what units they should be doing. They're teaching, the students are having the same math concepts taught, it's just how they're being taught as we test these programs.
Yeah, no, and I can see the basic principles are the same and the concepts, but the approach is so different that they're really in a different place, I think. And, you know, I've also seen the pilots start at the end of the year for the other grades, or all the grades, and, you know, the teachers have done a great job of it. They're not understanding it, they just pull from a different book, you know, and that's great, because I can see the different units coming home, the different, but I just, I worry for the teachers that are going to be, and then the kids in that room that might not have, you know, the same experiences if they were. So.
I have to say, I just worry at Blueberry in general, with that first grade class going into second grade, because I know that the first grade teachers have all embraced Engage New York, or Eureka, whatever it's called at this point.
I think first grade really likes it, and now it's seeming to come together.
I don't know if the second grade, like, we don't know what's going to happen next year, so we don't know if any second grade in Blueberry or Center or Wolf Swamp is going to be teaching whatever math program.
When's our deadline for that?
So, I mean, I've always just, I mean, I know I've expressed this to you before, I've said, you know, I think any second grader next year is going to be a little confused with math, because it's the language that they're learning in first grade at Blueberry. I don't know what they're doing in first grade at Center or first grade at Wolf Swamp, but I think whatever school they end up at next year, they're going to be a little confused.
I think that's been part of the frustration, because they've been using Investigation and Scott Forsman, which have different languages and different ways of doing it. So part of this being a pilot year is to test out new programs, so that everyone's using the same program. I think it's very confusing for elementary students to have Scott Forsman one year, then Investigations, because, Michelle, you're right, the language and the way you teach is very different, and Investigations is more similar to Engage New York. So that when you look at these programs, you're trying to say, okay, what's most important is to have a common program and language for the kids. It's not fair to the kids that one teacher prefers one program, and then the next year they switch it up. So that's what the point is, to try and find a program with similar language. The scope and sequence will be the same, but the kids need a common language and experience. All the students at all three schools are having that different experience right now, so next year it will be a matter of giving them the new language, reviewing what they've been done, as well as introducing new concepts.
But when we did, can I just ask a question? When we did curriculum reviews on math, I mean, how did we end up, even after the fact, with, you know, Scott Forsman being taught one place and Investigations being supplemented in another place, and Engage New York in first grade being piloted at Blueberry? Like, wasn't the purpose of that to, you know, kind of get them all together?
It was. Investigations is a high-level math program and not very good on the basic skills. Scott Forsman is very good on the basic skills, not the higher-level math. So the decision of the last committee was to use Investigations as primary, but to supplement with Scott Forsman. And some people at some grade levels felt Scott Forsman was better and continued to use it. So this time, it's going to be clearly one program without the choice of using two. Because I think over the years, some people continued to use Scott Forsman as much as Investigations, and that became confusing for the kids.
And your math committee is teachers from all three schools?
All three schools, the math specialist, classroom teachers, the math coach.
And why, I know that you've said, told me before, but I apologize if I, when I'm, I know that it's time for a math review, and I know we're kind of getting off subject a little bit.
But it's on subject, because it's, you know.
I know, you know, and, like, when I'm looking to do something new in my job, I look at other people that are doing it successfully, and I take what they're doing successfully, and I bring it into what I'm doing. Like, why aren't we looking at the Weston and Wellesley and Lexington, like, the higher-performing Eastern Massachusetts schools, because, and looking at what they're using and saying, you know, and talking with them and saying, is this working great for you? Is this not working great for you?
We have.
Because I know, like, when I talk to people, and, you know, I lived in Eastern Mass for 10 years, and so when I talk to my friends out there about the RTI, they're like, oh yeah, we've been doing that for 10 years. I'm like, oh, good, good, we're finally getting it out here. So like, I'm just.
We have done that. Susan has a list. I asked her to compile a list of all the top districts and what programs they were using. There is no common thread for what one program they are. What is, what is the most important factor is they have a program, and that the teachers are using the program, there's continuity, and when they go from K-1 to. What's really important is teacher training with the program. When I came on, Investigations had been underway for, I think it was the fourth year, and the fourth and fifth grade teachers still hadn't been trained yet. So whatever program we have, we already have staff developers lined up, we have days, we have teachers know they're going to be trained. So that, those are the common things. To make sure it's one program, so the language is the same as they go up. And the second thing is to make sure your teachers are trained very, very well as they implement the program. And the focus of the summer curriculum, the end of school, they'll be training, summer there's training being offered, they'll be training all next year. Our specialists will be trained in depth, so that they become resources in the building, as well as to have ongoing staff development during our release days. Susan, do you want to add to that?
We're visiting schools that use the programs that we pick for our final grade. We start tomorrow, we have one later on this week, and then one at the end of the month.
Are they successful schools?
Yeah, they score well. They score well, yes. There really wasn't any consistency that we could find in, you know, any, several districts that use the same program. I think it really has to do with continuity and a good blend of the basic concepts and then the high-level thinking. So we're looking for a program that has all of that. Investigations is, I mean, Eureka, as you're finding, is really a deep program and digs into math and the language of math and the concepts, and then there are others that are really kind of like we're used to, you know, teach the algorithm, figure it out, and move on. So we need a good blend of both of those things.
Do you feel like they're leaning towards one, or moving away towards, like, Go Math, perhaps?
No, no.
They're not leaving Go Math behind?
I don't get a sense, when I, just when I think I know, something comes up and it's something different. So there's a lot of opinions weighing in, and a lot of people are teaching with a lot of different things. Kids are weighing in, teachers are talking to their kids about it, so we're getting information from a lot of different stakeholders on it, and I think, yeah, I probably will be thinking about two out of the three until the very end. I can't say which.
And what if, like, if you see that universally, like, because it's so, you know, if first, second, and third favor one program, and fourth and fifth favor another, then can we, you know what I mean? Because maybe that is why, you know, maybe those are really better for the fourth and fifth, and.
But they spiral, don't they? That's the part, like.
Yeah. So the argument that you're making for the first graders who've learned the Engage New York language or Eureka language, heading on to second grade, I don't think they're going to have a problem. They're really, their teachers are bragging about them all over the place, but, you know, yeah.
First grade is.
Yeah. How do you, you know, it's better to have continuity all the way through, but it's something that we can look at if we come up with a divide like that. Well, definitely.
Well, and, you know, I will say, the first grade, I think, looking at my daughter who's doing it now, as opposed to my, you know, third grader who had a different curriculum in first grade, I think Engage New York is much more advanced, and I think that it's taught them very well. What I fear is that you combine those kids that are here with some other kids that might not have had that, you know, and that's, that's what you can teach. You have to teach to all those kids, and it's hard to, and we've talked about that, too.
We have to trust that our educators are going to be able to do that and supplement where they need to, and we have a grand group of teachers.
I know, I know. And I, and that's not what I'm saying, it's just even more work for them.
Yeah, but they're, they're really clamoring for something. Give us something that we can use, that we know this is the program, so we're not using online, you know, supplements. We're not using from here, we're not pulling from there. That's what's really time-consuming for teachers, as you know.
Yeah, no, no, I'm speaking to the combining of kids from one school and one curriculum to another, and that's what's more work. So they're going to have to adjust to a new math curriculum, that's added work. You have, you know, you have your prep work done for one year, and you don't have it done for, so they have all this added work, then there's, you know, I'm just, I guess to sum up in terms of some of the comments, I'm feeling, sitting here rushed and panicked, that there's a lot on the plate for the teachers, for the kids, administrators, everything, and I want to see what we can do to alleviate.
I'm confident we're on the right track, because already they've been making those switches from Scott Forsman to Investigations, and you're right, it's not ideal. I think the language and having a similar way of thinking and applying the math would benefit the kids. So I think having any program is going to enhance the experience for our children, because I think it has to be difficult for them, jumping from one program to another.
I agree. It will, it'll feel easier for the teachers to have a decision and to be able to teach that one type of, you know, whatever they choose, but, you know, and then I think the last thing I want to say in terms of the public records request, I have no problem sharing my emails, so, you know, I, I have nothing to hide, and they're yours. You know, however we proceed, I asked Diane, what do I have to do? I'm willing and able to print them out, whatever, but I would actually say, I'd rather save the trees. If we can do it electronically, I vote for that. That's a lot of paper, and I don't really want to print it if we can avoid that, so.
I don't think, we don't have to take a vote on that. Isn't it just like public record?
We responded to Sean. There's a cost incurred with it, it's state law, how you go about that. It's the amount of time that it takes somebody to actually go through and find all the emails. We did do the first phase of that, there were over 3,000 emails, so it's a matter of being willing to pay for it. It's a lot of work.
But can we not print them? Please, I don't know, I mean, I.
It would be a matter of honing them down. So if Sean wants to pursue that, he's been sent a letter, he needs to respond to us, and then we'll go from there.
Can you ask them on the desk, or?
He did ask.
If you did ask, well, fine.
That's a lot of paper.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I also put a plug for your online supplements for math?
Yeah.
That front row that you guys are using right now seems pretty nice.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know if it goes with one of the math programs, or it's just an extra, but as a parent, I love the videos.
Okay. Yeah, the explanation videos.
The explanations. For me, homework should be, I don't, I shouldn't have to sit with my fourth grader to help him with his homework. So if he could, if he has a question about something, I should, I should, I love that I can say to him, watch the video, and see how they do it on the video, and he can relearn it.
I missed it.
I have so many emails in here, I can't find that one. Which one is, can we advertise it for anyone that's watching? No?
No, it's part of a program. You can't.
Oh.
No.
You're being serious?
Yeah, seriously, yeah. You have to be in that particular.
I thought I missed an email that gave us tutorials for the kids to watch online, but that's.
Engage New York, though, does have online tutorials as well. Right.
But front row is for?
A different one. I can't.
It's for a different math program? So if we don't go with that math program, we're not going to get that?
All of them have a digital component. All three programs have a digital component to it.
Like a tutorial, like she's talking about? Because that's, you know, if parents get to weigh in at all, that is.
Yeah. One of them doesn't have access to a tutorial, yeah. But we, that is one component that we're looking at. It's going to be helpful for kids when they get home, you know?
And one of the things that our math specialist at Center does is parent school, where she teaches how to teach your kid, like, the kind, because it's huge, I mean, I get, like, lattice multiplication can be mind-numbing, if you haven't been taught how to do it. So, just knowing, like, the language and stuff to use with your kids and that. So I think that that's something that, in the math committee, too, to say, make sure that we have that piece in there, that that's part of it.
Some parent training.
Yeah, but also even online, because like, my husband can't go to those right now, because he's covering for me, so, you know what I mean? But if I could say, help Tyler with his homework, and here's a tutorial.
Make our own Khan Academy.
Yes, exactly.
I was just going to say Khan Academy.
Yeah, it's just making sure you have the right language, though.
Yeah. How are they solving it right?
You're looking at going other places, my kids do that.
So it's like Colleen just got all the more work on her plate, right? All right, any other comments from down here?
I think I would.
Katie?
Nope.
All right, I just have one or two, not necessarily in response to the visitor comments, but a couple things that were mentioned did resonate with me a little bit. The first is, you know, based on how the redistricting subcommittee has voted so far, I think, and this is a question I'm going to re-ask when you give your presentation, is how are we addressing, if we are grandfathering fifth graders as the proposal is at the moment, how are we addressing siblings of those parents? Or, I mean, of those students? I think that historically, we've had a tendency to kind of not take into consideration working parents with, you know, late start days and even early release days, and I know that they're necessary, so we've done it. But, you know, having to transfer one student at one school to another student at another school, you know, let's, we need to take that into consideration. I think I heard you say, and address my second question, which is, what do we do about students with IEPs or students that are special education programs? And the response that I've been giving when I get those questions is that, you know, special education students with IEPs are inherently individual. That's the I in IEP, and that, you know, at least from my perspective, you know, depending on how this committee votes, you know, I believe that we should be taking a look at every single one of those students. So I'm going to re-ask that question again when we get to your presentation. And then finally, I'm going to echo Kim's sentiment, and I guess Michelle's sentiment at this point, too, with regard to the supposed potential for civil rights violation. The first time that I heard anything about that was sitting next to Kim in BTC during the last redistricting subcommittee meeting. So I'm concerned that we didn't hear about that sooner. You know, obviously, I think we were all aware of some of the space constraints at Blueberry, you know, as sort of like a reason for, or genesis for this conversation around redistricting. But I didn't realize that it was that severe, and that's concerning, that it wasn't brought to at least our attention sooner.
It had just been in the newspaper. It was after the school committee meeting, and it showed up in the newspaper. That's how we found out. So it was, it was new information.
Okay. I guess my, my concern is that members of the subcommittee were informed before elected members of this committee with the actual responsibility that goes along should we get cited. So that's, that's my concern, is just sort of a process question around how we're notified around those potential large looming issues out there. So those are my, my comments. Okay, great. Anybody else know? Kevin's been waiting a long time to give his presentation, so I'm going to move things around a little bit so that he can give his presentation and get out of here. I know he's got a daughter at home he wants to get home to.
I'll use the board, but there's not a whole lot of information on the slide versus what I'm saying, so you don't necessarily need to organize your seats. We have to provide you with some halftime entertainment between.
Between one long conversation and another long conversation.
So at the end of the year, I was asked to provide a presentation on status of technology in the district. So we have known about this since the beginning of the year. Sorry I showed up on this night.
Janet's not.
No, it's a good night.
I will try to be as brief and thorough as possible. So the questions that I was asked to talk about, really, you know, what accomplishments have we made this year with technology?
Did you graph it? Did you do that yourself?
I'm sorry. Yes. What's the progress of our strategic plan, what future initiatives are we looking at, how are we measuring usage and deployment of our technology, and a quick summary of the Technology Advisory Board and Curriculum Committee. So those are the topics I'll address tonight. So in terms of accomplishments, it's been a busy year. We've had a number of projects, over 30 some odd projects in software, data, hardware, network, and otherwise. So I will highlight. hardware, network, and otherwise. So I will highlight a number of those now as quickly as possible, and we'll provide you with this list with explanation to the committee afterwards, if you wanna dig further into it. This year, we implemented a number of data systems, including the INFORM system, which is an extension to Power School, which allows all of our staff, teachers, administrators, et cetera, to look at all of our student assessment data together in one place. We use a number of tools to inform the budget process and classroom instruction. This is really a data warehouse. It's very powerful and allows classroom teacher access, which is, is important moving forward. In addition, the Ames Web was fully rolled out this year, so we provide a lot of support in terms of account setup and data integration for, for the full assessment schedule for Ames Web, including the ability to take the Ames Web data and bring that back into INFORM to compare with other assessment data. So there was quite a bit of data and software work related to that. We did implement a new school-to-home communication system, School Messenger, which replaced Alert Now. That product was no longer available, so we had to switch. I do believe we chose the best one on the market. It also allowed us the opportunity to do secure document delivery, which supported Mr. Rinaldi's electronic report card pilot, which has been rather successful, in my view. It also has a number of other resources that extend our public portal to provide information to, to families online.
Are we thinking that now, that based on how well worked at the high school, of moving it down to middle and elementary school, too?
We can certainly have that discussion. I'm not sure, Maria will probably provide an update at some point. Paul Dunkley had done an analysis of the survey, the public survey related to that. We didn't find an overwhelming response that really wants to go electronic only, so they are continuing with both paper and electronic at this time. The, the cost savings are really very minimal. So it, it becomes kind of, without overwhelming pressure, we actually heard more on the side of, well, it seems like you already made this decision, just go ahead and do it. So we wanna make sure we're, we're being, you know, respectful of the fact that we didn't make a decision, we wanted real input, and the feedback was not overwhelming, that anyone wanted electronic only. So we're gonna continue to provide it, cause it's no additional cost to do that electronically, and students and families will get it electronically sooner than the paper copy, but we're gonna continue with that process now. If the committee wants to push that down to lower grades, we have the capability.
The students receiving the report cards really quickly was the best of the day.
Well, I got the, on Power School, I, I got my son's report card with all of his comments before he did, so.
Yeah, the reality is that when we launched the public portal a number of years ago, it made the report card almost moot. Many, many districts have actually done away with , as a result of budget constraints, report cards. There's no real legal necessity to provide a report card, per se. Up until recently, the report card, the only piece on the report card was the cumulative GPA. That was the only piece of information that you really couldn't get on the public portal.
And that was Joseph's real impetus for asking us to do that anyway, was he couldn't figure it out.
I believe we fixed that now. I think that's a published item on there as well. So there really isn't anything left that you're not already getting in real time, but people like to have a report card. There's a number of reasons why having a report card to put up on your refrigerator, or to provide to a scholarship fund or something, is often important. And again, because there's, the cost savings are really so minimum, you know, less than a few thousand dollars in terms of paper and, and resources. Yes, that's, that can be a lot of trees over time, but there's just, it's not an overwhelming savings to say that we're gonna go against what the public input was, which is, we don't prefer this. Actually, a large number of students were the ones who said, "I really prefer getting the paper one." So, you know, that's kind of maybe counterintuitive, but that was the feedback, so we're, that's what we're going with.
Tom Landers will be making a recommendation later in the year, when the first electronic report cards went out, there was a glitch, and there were some problems, and I think that has made some parents hesitant about receiving it that way. The second round went very well, but we're still seeing a close response from parents on who prefers paper as opposed to electronic. But I think as we finish out the year, he'll come forward with a recommendation at that time.
And not to be like bogged down in that, but can you, are we?
I got thirty more projects to go, so.
Perfect. Are we able to, like, segment it the way you can do, like, an e-bill for your credit card? Like, "I only want the electronic," or "I only want this paper," or "I want both"?
We could certainly look into that. The reality is that we go through the same steps to generate both the, the paper and electronic. It's probably more work to sort out the ones, because they all have to be printed. So, at this point, we don't really have the capability, and again, the, the savings are really just not substantial enough in either time, people, or, or paper resources and ink to, to really, this is not our top priority, is basically what I'm saying.
No, I, I, that's not.
Just a quick question. Can we survey the parents that aren't in high school by chance? Just cause I, I know I would love to have it electronic and hard copy, just cause if it gets to me quicker, like, I, this year I had to go to the conference, and I had just received their report card that day, so it would have been helpful for me to have it ahead of time. And I don't think we got the survey, you know, as elementary or middle school, but I would certainly say, cause my kids sometimes, they have it in their backpack, and I don't know. And it would be nice to have it both.
Yeah, I'm happy to extend that down to additional grades, if that's the desire of the committee. Again, it doesn't cost us anything, anything extra, it's just an added process we can do. So I'm happy to do that, or explore that option, to see what the input is. We did finish the role, completion of the Mediacast system at the, the high school. That is a system that is most visibly seen as the ten digital signage units in the high school, but it's also a fully integrated system for on-demand video, live and recorded television programming, educational content, and even the ability to capture lectures and then play them back to students. So it's a fully integrated system that was part of the high school construction, that we finally were able to fully implement and get some teachers and students using. So they've been using the, the digital signboards to put up coming events and other important dates. And I know, in the media center, the, Lori, I believe, Joe, you've been part of that process, using some of the other tools that are available with that. So that project was essentially completed this year as well. We did add the live streaming capability at the request of one of the select board members, which has been wildly popular for all of our town, town meeting events.
Do you have, not to interrupt, do you have metrics on how many people actually utilize that?
You can actually look, I believe it tells you per, per event, how many people kind of watched. It's, I usually see the numbers about thirty or so.
We've like doubled our viewership.
You have doubled your viewership, yes. The redistricting forum, I think, was the highest attended online event to date. But I do wanna just take a minute to pause and thank the LCTV staff. While this was a town initiative, we are essentially rebroadcasting their stream, and they have taken on the responsibility of actually starting that, that stream. So it doesn't require any staff on my part, or anyone else. They're already here doing the broadcast. I just wanna thank Dave and his staff for, for their willingness to take on something that really isn't their responsibility. You know, they already published the, the official broadcasts to, to their YouTube page, but that does take a couple days for YouTube to process that. So this allows a lot of media outlets and people that wanna watch things back immediately, gives them that option to kind of fill the gap for two days before the official recording is, is published. I just wanna thank Dave, Doug, Brian, and Tracy for their work in, in helping make that a successful program. We provided additional support, account setup, and, and support for pilots of the Myon Scholastic Encrolier ebook platforms this year, which have been very, very well received. The, our math program, our online math program, iXL, which many of the elementary folks may be familiar with, launched an English language arch component this year as well, so similar to the math. It's kind of an automated, software-based tool that, that puts students, allows students to progress along tasks at, at their level. So three of our element, or two of our elementary schools are actually piloting that in some of the grade levels.
Is that separate than the QIA?
That is separate from that, yeah.
Is that gonna take the place of Lexia?
Again, this is just a pilot. I was asked to kind of get, I believe this was even funded at the school level with discretionary funds. I think only two of the elementary schools chose a grade level they wanted to try it out. But just because of the success of the iXL math program, they wanted to see what the ELA offering had. So I assume we're gonna hear from those principals and teachers in terms of whether they wanna have that, that investment made long-term, that may become something they go to LEAF for, or PTOs.
Let me answer that.
It's a supplemental program. It's not, you know, part of our curriculum.
And Lexia is more in-depth, also very much more expensive, so they're looking at both to see if this could actually do the same thing Lexia does. So we're waiting to have feedback from teachers on that.
We're also participating in a pilot for the Discovery at History program. As you have seen at this committee, the success of the Discovery at Science at the middle schools. History is up for a curriculum review next year, so we, we took the opportunity to have the middle school staff get a, a day of training, and then they, they spent since January, and they will have the access through the end of the school year to take a look at the history offering, and they'll, again, use that to inform the decision about the curriculum review committee for, for history, to see if those are tools they wanna either adopt or, or add in as supplemental. We made a number of Power School system enhancements this year, a lot of them related to the public portal and the information that's seen there, as well as a number of new reports and communication tools that teachers now have in their grade books, so they can target email communications to families and students, et cetera. So we've made a, a number of those kind of enhancements to our Power School system. We provided support for the school website redesigns. We provided some additional, original, initial research recommendations. This committee ultimately decided to continue with the Google platform, and we just provided some support to the great work that Hillary and the school webmasters did in terms of turning over that, that new design and layout, which was really successful.
I have a question about that, too. I know that the town is moving over to Civic Plus?
It's on here.
Okay. Is that, are we incorporating our website into that?
I can talk to you a little bit about that. They're really separate platforms.
Okay.
We did provide support for the redistrict mapping, as, as everyone has kind of said. That process was long and involved, involved a lot of data collection and mapping of where residents or students live and such. So we did provide, from our department, a number of supports for that, for that process throughout the year. And we have a number of town projects going on, too. The electronic permitting project in the building department has been ongoing this year, and that will go live in the next couple months. We've already completed the initial setup and training of that, so residents will have the option, following the initial go-live for the internal department, eventually, within a month or so, I would assume, that electronic permitting will be an option for residents in this town as well, which right now is a completely big paper-based process at Town Hall. So we'll be able to bring that into the 21st century. We provided support for the Cartograph Public Works software implementation, which is the work management system that the Public Works uses. And part of that is also the UR Gov app, which is the ability for residents to use their smartphone to, you know, take a picture of a pothole, or a tree, or a sign. So again, increasing the ability of, of community input into the Public Works process, so we supported that software implementation as well. The Civic Plus Town website project has been ongoing again this year. That was part of our initial recommendation, so we've actually already seen what is essentially a final design, and they've completed the initial migration of all the current town system over to the new platform. Training will be in, in May, with a go-live date in June for the town's website. And that will encompass all the municipal departments. There will be some representation for the school department, and we may be suggesting that all of the school committee-related documents, agendas, calendar items and such be put into that platform, cause it's designed specifically for that. But beyond that, everything else will stay where it is for the schools. Civic Plus is, as, they are a municipal website company. They even, they don't work with schools anymore, because it's not their core competency. They recognize that schools are, are often largely different in that respect. So there's no reason to change our, what we're doing here. We, you know, we, we knew that going into the website redesign project here at the school, too, that wouldn't be work that would be, you know, thrown away. That's why we did that when we did, but we didn't need to wait for this project. We knew it would be, school, school websites and the district site would remain where they are. But we may take some of those components that make the most sense, since all of the board and commission documents, agendas, alerts, notifications will all be part of that platform. It may make sense to take the school committee as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then we provided funding and support for an ongoing project in human resources. An investment analysis was done on our software back in 2013, which provided a long list of things we should be doing better with that human resources software. And we're now providing our fourth week of consulting to the HR department to, to enhance, enhance those. A lot of that work is around school, department employees as well, so it is, is benefiting us greatly. In terms of hardware and networking, we had a number, I think it was eight, new interactive whiteboard systems that LEAF funded, we installed at the beginning of the year. A green screen studio at Glenbrook, which completes that product, so that all, all of our schools have access to that kind of technology for media creation with the green screens. An iPad cart for Center Kindergarten was funded by LEAF. Additional carts, Chromebook carts at Blueberry and Williams were deployed. I believe those were also LEAF-funded. The 3D printing is LEAF-funded at the high school that many of you may have seen at the Ties event. We completed the rollout of the telephone system. We had the five remaining schools left on that project, which we did during the summer, so that the entire town is now on that same, single system. We refreshed over 125 teacher computers that were scheduled for this year. So those were the initial batch from four or five years ago. Got their first, those were not the least ones, those are the ones we originally owned, so those have been, those have been refreshed. We completed a, a complete server refresh here at the high school. That was probably done, I'd say maybe six to eight months ahead of time, or ahead of originally scheduled, only because of the wear and tear that took place during the construction project here. The risk to loss of data was too high to wait on that. And we've seen a tenfold increase in performance, and that does support all town operations, too. So I think that was one of the best things we could have done, is, is do that project early. It also allowed us to reuse some of the existing equipment to archive or provide additional storage for our video surveillance system, which was needed by the police department. So we, we were to kind of kill two birds with one stone in that project. We added quite a bit of additional, trying not to get too technical, additional redundancy features to our core network here. As you know, the entire town now is more of a hub and spoke off the high school rather than a ring, so lots of critical equipment for the network that runs all 14 town buildings is here in this building. So if there was an outage, it wouldn't impact things like fire, police, DBW. So we've added technology here to, to mitigate that risk. We completed the rollout of the wireless project, so we now have over 320 wireless access points in all the town buildings, providing near 100% coverage for wireless, which is, was our original goal. We implemented a new firewall, a new next-generation firewall with greater capacity and security features that are needed. We doubled our internet bandwidth for the town from 100 to 200 megabits. We replaced an aging email archiving appliance, which serves those public information requests for your emails. We were out of space because of the, the sheer, you know, volume of email we get now is far outstripped what had been planned four or five years ago. So we had to put a new one in place to maintain compliance with that mandate. We provided additional 15 laptops in Glenbrook Resource Rooms, and that provides equity between Williams and Glenbrook in terms of those programs. We just completed the refresh of the Williams and Glenbrook Computer Labs, those 30 brand-new desktop computers at each school to support those computer programs. We completed, there was 11 instructional spaces identified this year that were still remaining without projection equipment or multimedia systems. A lot of that has to do with the fact that we've kind of made spaces, instructional spaces out of closets and things like that. So we completed those systems so that essentially 100% of instructional spaces have access to that technology now. So there's no excuse of not, not having access to it. We completed a complete infrastructure upgrade at the police department, which was a number of years in the making. We replaced all of the computer-aided design workstations and mechanic systems at DBW to support their operations for GIS and, and CAD. We replaced the CCTV or video surveillance system that is primarily housed here at the high school, and a portion of which is housed at the police department, and now have the ability, police can monitor all of our town buildings on, on that system 24/7 from dispatch, which was a desire we had back in 2008 with the original implementation, and we couldn't make it happen due to the network. With the new system, they have that, and it's also regionally integrated, so that Bay Path, Springfield, East Long Meadow, we all have the same system. So for, for any kind of regional public safety event, it's easy to use. The police department and other public safety responders know how to use it. So that provides a greater level of security for, for our buildings and for our students. And we, and finally, we helped implement a fire text response system at the fire department. So again, we have a number of, can't forget, we have a number of town responsibilities, too, as an IT department, and a lot of those are very complicated implementations. And just three additional things. We did hire the network administrator this year, so we hired, onboarded, and trained that new position. That's been tremendously valuable to me, especially so I can focus on project management and, and planning, rather than being, you know, working on a server. To have that high degree of expertise, that can go deep on, on issues, I don't have to hire outside consultants at, at very high rates to service those needs. So that's been incredibly valuable to me, and to our, to our implementation. We did launch a Tech Tuesday email, so I do send out something. I think you guys get that as well.
I like those.
Technology tips, tricks, and events, and other things about technology and education, just to keep that as the forefront of folks' minds. So we'll continue that as long as we can.
Thank you.
And the Ties event this year was certainly a huge success. So that is the list of accomplishments, as far as I'm concerned, for this year. Questions?
I don't know. That's it?
That's it.
I need to make sure my email address is correct on that Tuesday email.
It goes to all staff, so you should get it.
I don't get it, but Michelle gets it.
I do, I do, and I love it.
We'll double check. It may be in your spam folder.
You taught me things that I just.
I'll have to look in my spam folder.
Okay, quickly, in terms of technology usage, just some quick stats for you. In terms of the school-owned computers for student use, this is, does not include any of our staff computing. These are the quick numbers, and the most important thing here is the last bullet, which essentially means, since we originally proposed the strategic plan that, that funded an initial round of, of computer leasing, et cetera, we've since tripled what students have access to. We are not one-to-one, but we're pretty darn close. If you count the numbers up. If you count the numbers up, we're just about 2,000. So, I'd say a lot of that is actually a result of additional funding like PTOs and LEAF too. So, that, that has not been solely borne on taxpayers. But that's our current deployment. So, the question is, what are we doing with all that? Students are engaging in research, writing, math, discovery ed, vocabulary building, media creation, reading, assessment, coding, science lab probe ware. We have maker spaces for robotics, green screens, virtual field trips, social media, digital citizenship, you know, the list goes on. These are the components of our, our curriculum program, and I'll talk briefly in a moment about the Technology Curriculum Committee and, and their work that they've done. We have asked schools to track the usage of the equipment, and what we found in that is an interesting thing, that it's actually very hard to, to track usage with it being so relatively ubiquitous now. We're not leaving things on carts anymore. Oftentimes, schools are breaking up a cart and putting a number of devices in each, each classroom so that it's almost harder to, to track. Well, is that cart being used? Well, portions of it are being used all over the place. So, I think one thing we need to do is maybe readjust how we're asking for usage data, or try to find additional tools to figure out a better way to kind of report on that. There's no way to say it's being used, you know, X percent of time. What we know is that it's being used every day in every classroom. We see results of that. We see, you know, in terms of what we've collected, many of the teachers have to provide us with, you know, what tools do they use and, and on what days do they use it? Every day, there's an entry for almost every teacher. So, we can report with confidence that technology has been integrated, especially at the elementary level with the technology integration specialists, in all classrooms at all times. There's still some work to do there. I think the reality is because we're not one-to-one, it is not, it is not truly ubiquitous in terms of every student having one, but that's certainly not standing in the way of, of usage.
Can I say that I think that that's a testament to how well it's fully integrated into what? It's like saying, you know, tracking how we use pencils.
Right.
It's ridiculous to think that we could possibly do it. And the fact that we can't really do it with our technology means that it's integrated properly. It's not just, you know, something fun to play with, it's actually...
I'm glad, I'm glad you see it that way, because that's the way we see it as well.
Absolutely.
I wanted to ask, do all those students, and one we're going through, between elementary and middle school, is there an equal number of student device ratio?
It's not equal. It is equitable, and part of the number, it's not equal, because again, we make plans here and you fund, you fund things, and then PTOs and LEAF will step in and kind of take those numbers out of sync often. But we're constantly looking at that and constantly readjusting. But again, the deployment of technology is actually different in each school too to meet the needs. Schools have different enrollment numbers, they have different setups in terms of how big and sprawling the buildings are. Some, you know, Glenbrook doesn't have an elevator to bring something up and down. So, each building has to deal with those challenges individually. So, again, that's why we kind of take it up to a 50,000-foot level and say, it's being used across the board, and they're making, you know, teachers are incredibly resourceful and making the best use of where the technology is. They might bring them to a lab somewhere, but we have very few of those left. Almost all the technology now is, is mobile. If you looked at the previous slide, I think, you know, 186 desktops, everything else is mobile, can be moved around. And primarily those desktops, a lot of those are here at the high school in specialized labs such as the multi, you know, the art, digital art lab, or the mini lab. You know, those are for specific purposes. Or the middle schools where they actually have a, a technology class, those kids are meeting in that lab, so they have the high-powered equipment in that place. Everything else is mobile. So, again, it's, it's equitable, in my, in my opinion. It's not equal, well, again, because our enrollment numbers are not equal across, across schools or class slide, you know, class sizes. We also have at the high school with the BYOD pilot, you know, this is just addressing specifically school-owned equipment, but as the high school told me, you know, on top of the numbers of what they're seeing in usage there, you know, students are being asked to use their device. I'm, you know, we're not tracking every time some student takes out their, their device to do something in a science lab or what have you. And you see that during walkthroughs. It's being used all the time, and we're just, we can't, we can't track. You know, what I can say is I can see the numbers of devices on our, on our network on any given day. Far outstrips a number that we own. So, I know for sure, probably by a factor of, you know, 25%, nearly 500 devices or so show up on our network every day that we don't own. A lot of that can just be, you know, each of us has a cellphone, you know, a lot of, you know, faculty and staff have additional devices that show up on that, but a lot of that is also student usage, so. Future initiatives. Some of the things we're looking, looking to the future on, we do have, with the new network that we own, we do have a connection to East Long Meadow and some opportunities with Bay Path and the cooperating colleges of Greater Springfield, which is five colleges in the area that are all connected by fiber, as well as a number of other initiatives that we've been working on for years. Essentially, you know, connecting these networks in towns and schools provides lots of opportunities, even if it's just partnerships with the educational institutions, or whether it be group purchasing of internet bandwidth to reduce costs. There's lots of opportunities there, so we're continuing to explore those, those options and opportunities. One thing we're currently looking at with East Long Meadow is how we can avoid having redundancy locally in terms of just using each other as a backup site. So, simple things like that could actually save a, a lot of money in the long run. So, those are the type of opportunities we're looking to capture. We are continuing our digital learning program, still attempting to get to a one-to-one. That is the state's recommendation, and that's what ultimately makes a digital learning program successful, is not having to worry about signing out equipment, but having something in every student's hand. So, we are continuing down that path. STEM or STEAM opportunities, science, technology, engineering, math, sometimes with arts, coding, robotics, more of that, more of those kind of areas are what's really up and coming. That's what's engaging students. Those are the kind of skill sets we need for today's jobs. So, we're doing a lot more of that. A lot of that's being done in after-school programs or enrichment courses, but we're also integrating a lot more of that into the curriculum. And I did see that the draft of the Technology Curriculum Committee's scope and sequence document, you know, embraces that as well. So, we'll see a lot more of that in our regular classrooms as well. I'm still looking to potentially start some kind of student-led help desk or innovation law, which gives students, basically modeled after successful programs like Burlington High or several other Massachusetts districts that already do this, where students actually help provide some of that technology integration at the higher levels. There's no reason not to do that. Just, you know, it's a free resource to us and gives students an opportunity to, you know, customize their learning path by getting involved in something that they're, they're interested in as part of their education. We are having a complete assessment done of our, our print and copy fleet this year, as that will be a large turnover for Tom to, to negotiate, I believe, next year, to make sure that we have the right devices for both input and output of computer-based information.
Do we use handouts for, in the high school, one-to-one, the app for?
Oh, I think, like, the handouts.
No, no, I mean like, the app where you hand out, so like, whatever I give to my kids digitally, it's handed out like a...
I don't know what I could refer to, but we do have a lot of like, Google Classroom is a little bit a lot, or just...
So, you're turning in things on, using Doc?
Yeah, so we have, we have three primary platforms which support that. Google Classroom, which is fully integrated with all of our Google apps that are already given to all students and faculty, has a complete automated way of distributing and collecting assignments. Some teachers choose to use that platform. We've had a Moodle, which is an online learning environment for quite some time. Some teachers use that, which allows for electronic distribution and collection. And many, many teachers also use Edmodo, which is a third-party tool. We don't support that. It's a, it's an education-only, it's, it's, it's an educational, social network for classes that allows for that same kind of thing too. So, we have, we allow, we kind of support those three platforms just to keep three core ones, and that's the primarily what students will find they're using. Some teachers are actually also using Power School too. There's a lot of ability to at least, you know, put out assignments. There's no way to collect inside Power School per se, but again, with, with students and teachers all having the same platform of communication tools, it's a lot easier now for students to, you know, you know, write their homework or, or do a video or something in Google Docs and just share it right to their teacher. And teachers can collect them in Dropbox. So, a lot of that kind of thing is what's, where, where that kind of work is happening. But again, without a one-to-one program, teachers are spending a lot of time having to figure out what to do with the kids that either don't have it or don't have access to it right then. So, I think that's where, that's where the pain points are. It's a, it's a classroom management organization thing.
What are we doing for our graduating seniors with all of their information that are, that's stored on Google Docs on the drive that, under their Long Meadow accounts? Do we leave that open for them for a certain amount of time, so term papers and things like that they can access, or are they...
That will probably be the subject of a Tech Tuesday that I'll send to students. There is a complete, Google provides a tool where you can actually take all of it with you, either download it or transfer it to another Google account. So, that's something we can provide students with, the directions on how to do that. Usually, their accounts will remain active for most of the summer. It's an automated process, so when we roll Power School to the next year, which is usually the end of July or early August, depending on our scheduling, that's when the accounts will be automatically disabled. So, I can certainly put that on my list of things to, to notify students. Here are the instructions of how to take your stuff with you if you want to.
And just give like a warning to before, maybe?
And maybe just put out there one, because I'm a classic student, which is really effective.
I'll do that.
Everybody too.
Thank you.
Ah, where were we? We are currently evaluating an option for a new sped management software. I'm not sure if we're going to go down that path, but there's a new option to actually embed that inside Power School. So, anytime there's an option to make something easier and integrated, we, we want to look at it. So, we're just, we are looking at that possibility. We're also looking at possibly helping Public Works and facilities to, to upgrade the software for our building management system, make that easier, more accessible, which runs all of our HVAC systems in our, in our schools. And we also have a need to upgrade our point-of-sale hardware in our cafeterias. They are now well beyond their, their useful life in terms of hardware.
We purchased that? I thought that Witten's doesn't provide it for us?
Yeah. Witten, Witten's provided the, most of the office technology that's used in the food service office, but Tom could probably talk more to that.
They have a contract now.
Do you recall we outsourced, it was a gift?
Oh, that's right, from Char Wells.
From the vendor that we had, so, but that is going on five plus six years now, so...
Yeah, we've had license for what, two years, two full years, yeah?
Two, Char Wells for four, so. Equipment definitely needs to be upgraded and replaced probably by the end of the year.
Okay. In terms of strategic plan progress, there are a number of items still outstanding from the original report, and these are them. We, we do a lot around security, but we don't actually have a written information security plan. And so, that is one of my goals, is to actually write down all those procedures and policies, or collect policies that exist, or procedures that need to be written down, so the community understands what security, data security is in place. Training, 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 you know, we, we do, we do a lot already. There's a huge room for additional, you know, opportunities, like the Tech Tuesday idea is just a simple thing, but we really need to be investing more in the, the training and professional development opportunities of our staff. The high school and the district at large has actually done a great job of integrating technology into PD days in terms of teacher-led sessions. The high school's done that several times now, where it's almost strictly teachers teaching other teachers largely about technology implementation or integration in their classrooms. So, kudos to the, the principals and the teachers that have organized, organized that, but there's more that we could do. We do, we do have these citizen employee self-service modules from UNIS that we had put in our plan. We own them now, but we have to implement them, and that's just a matter of coordinating that with the, the town offices that support that. Same thing with the document management system. There's still a lot of paper-based processes, mostly in the town, but also in the schools, that we really need a strategy to help rein that in. And those were, those were items, you know, that were five years out originally, that were now kind of coming upon the point where we need to start investigating those things very seriously. Then finally, I'll mention the Technology Advisory Board, for better or worse, has been a challenge.
It's our problem child.
Between myself, Marie, Stephen Crane, the town manager, we, we've all attempted on a number of occasions to get that board together for various discussions and had a really hard time with the leadership of that, that committee. Stephen has essentially said that the Select Board is considering a policy which would allow them to recall members so that we could reorganize that. So, that's kind of where it stands. The reality is that the board was formed, was finally formed, you know, after the initial, initial strategic plan was even already funded and we were kind of underway. So, the informal board that had, had led to the creation of that board is really the one that did most of the work. We're at that point again now where we need to, you know, kind of re-up our strategic plan and really be thinking about that. So, it would be good again to have that kind of community input. So, I think whatever Stephen and the Select Board's efforts are to reorganize that committee back, I know there's some other projects, town wifi for instance, that they want to have discussed, so that's kind of where that board stands. It's just, it's been, you know, no fault of our...
No, and I, I mean, just to kind of echo your, your comments about that, you know, we had, you know, originally organized it as part of the administrative code when we consolidated, and at the time, Paul Sainzello and I had convened them, I think you were there, and we had a functioning board and they elected a chair, and then it kind of just petered out. And I know that Marie Angelides and I have tried to get them working when we were both chairs. You know, I know that it's, it's been a challenge, and, you know, in speaking with Paul and in speaking with Stephen, you know, that the issue of being able to recall an appointed member of a board is, they've had that issue on several boards, especially where they're not, where, you know, some people aren't showing up, or, you know, there's more significant things taking place in their personal lives that affect their ability to be on those boards. And so, you know, I, it's certainly a challenge, and I, and I know that I support their action in that regard. So, I'm sorry you're there.
Yeah, I support the continued use of, I mean, the idea is, is sound, to have community input into that, and to be helping review strategic plan on a yearly basis to help, you know, stand at that town meeting and support any kind of technology-related projects, or to help the capital planning board review those. You know, that, that public input, community input is important, so I, I don't, I'm not recommending to disband it. I think we just need to work through the issues.
Absolutely. They need to be, you know, kind of, there needs to be a, a refreshing of that, because, you know, the function for, you know, everybody on the board who's not super familiar with this committee that we actually jointly appoint, they're supposed to be the taxpayer advocate, the, you know, the third-party validator. It's supposed to be a group of tech, you know, the qualification that we utilized when we appointed them was they were experts in the field of information technology. On the working group, originally, that, you know, pre, you know, kind of existed before this, there were Cisco engineers, there were, you know, just really, really qualified people. You know, and for some reason, some of them didn't apply, but we, we ended up with a board that just kind of hasn't met, even though some of them have a lot of expertise in, in the area. And, you know, we've been lucky that we haven't come up to an issue where we needed them to come to town meeting and advocate for a technology project, but, I mean, any day now, right?
Yeah.
I, are you looking for people to be on that board? And it's not me, but I, I know, are there shortages of people?
So, there's an appointed board, it's five members, and they cannot meet because even though we've had several attempts at trying to contact their chair, they have, he hasn't hosted meetings, he hasn't called meetings to order, he hasn't responded to emails. I know that there was an attempt last year to actually...
We've had a couple attempts, and we just, because it hasn't been a quorum, it wasn't an official meeting, so...
So, there's, there's five people appointed to that board. You know, last year around this time, we appointed somebody for a full three-year term because they were staggered because of their first year, first couple of years. And they just, it just hasn't been something that we've been able to kind of get a group of, this group of people together to do. You know, and I, for better or for worse, I know that Stephen is, Crane has tried to get them together, I know Marie Angelides has tried, Kevin's tried. I know that Marie and I sent a joint letter last May to their chair, just very, very sort of much indicating that you need to, you need to call a meeting. And so, there's been meetings that have been called and a lack of quorum. So, there's just been a lot of sort of, I guess, organizational issues related to it. And it's not so much that we are out of, you know, we're, we're at a deficit of people who want to serve, it's that we currently are in a position where we can't get them together to serve.
Got it.
Yeah.
I know someone who may be interested in doing it.
Yeah, I would, there's...
The committee does have defined terms like any other committee or board, so...
So, you can?
We're always interested in having people that want to serve, because that's, actually what happened was, we didn't even realize that some of the terms had expired. And then, again, one of the challenges, because this board has to be jointly appointed by school committee and Select Board, it just adds an additional piece of, you know, bureaucracy and scheduling, because you guys don't have joint meetings that often. So we always want to have a depth of bench. We just need to kind of work out the organizational issue of being able to recall current leadership of that board, so that if there are people waiting that would like to participate, that we can get them in.
Yeah, and I, I'm going to echo Kevin's comments on that, because it's not that we don't want qualified people applying, we absolutely do. It just, yeah, I mean, like, we just have to get a chair who's going to call a meeting. That's the issue.
Okay. Sounds like they need to do something, right?
I know, it's, I mean, we're at a, we're at a loss right now.
All right, so the final item, the Technology Curriculum Committee has been meeting with Sue and working all year. I did see a draft of their, the initial elementary curriculum plan, scope and sequence. Fully support that going forward. So essentially, the committee's been working this year to draft the curriculum, scope and sequence, related specifically to technology standards. The state is concurrently updating their standards, which they had not done since 2008. And we only found out about that last year, pretty much after we started our own technology curriculum committee. So that won't be too big of a deal. I think a lot of the legwork, a lot of the work that the committee has done will be incredibly valuable to start the next school year off right, rather than waiting for the state to come up with new standards to align to. The curriculum committee has largely used the ISTI standards, which in terms of our plans has been referenced since I've been here. So at least for the last eight years, we don't necessarily, while we're accountable to the state standards, the ISTI standards are a national organization of technology standards and really do represent a lot of what the Common Core would like to see as well. So there's no duplication of work here, it's just a matter, we may have some alignment to do in the fall, once the state publishes their final technology standards documents. But I think the work that they've done is sound and will provide a really rich technology integration program for the district.
Is that ISDE?
ISTE.
TE, okay.
The National Society for Technology and Education. We are a district member of that organization.
And just a quick question. Do you know if like cyberbullying is covered in these standards or, you know, just, as an elementary parent, I've experienced things, and I know some things happened at Blueberry that, you know, I hope we're.
That's more of a training for teachers as opposed to a kid's curriculum?
Yeah, just like, you know.
It is part of, so that's part of a larger group really considered digital citizenship.
Okay.
So when we talk about digital citizenship, that's really a lot about, the curriculum related to that is really about how to stay safe online, how to treat others properly. Again, you know, cyberbullying is real, but it's also, it's bullying. So we don't, we don't want to make it that it's something special. It's, and we often take the approach of saying, if the behavior wouldn't be acceptable offline, it's also not acceptable online. So we don't necessarily target cyberbullying, it's really, that's more addressed in our larger bullying, anti-bullying education efforts. There are, again, the digital citizen components of that, which help address, you know, kids how to stay safe and how to have proper relationships online, how to not meet people or get estranged, that kind of thing. That's all component, that's all a component of digital citizenship. So you may not hear the term cyberbullying, but that's what it.
And I probably said that wrong, but like, you know, one of my kids at one point really didn't understand that there's somebody on the other side of the iPad, you know, and so, you know, I had to explain, if you won't say it to them, you know, here, then you can't say it to them on that. And I just wanted to know if that was being covered? Is that part of the standards or?
Yes, it absolutely is. And a lot of that is actually, some of the curriculums from Common Sense Media, some of my Tech Tuesdays are, some of the things that we post on the Facebook page are often from Common Sense Media, it's a nonprofit organization.
Yes.
That provides a lot of resources to education, to families in terms of social media use for kids, about general media, advertising exposure for kids. So there's a whole range of important digital topics there that are covered in that curriculum.
Okay, yeah, I know about that. I don't know if, have you sent an email to parents about that, Common Sense Media?
I have posted those things on Facebook.
Okay, I don't have Facebook.
That's something I could probably go.
It might be a good email for people like me, because I found out about that, and now anytime my kids ask for a game or a, you know, anything, I go to that website.
Full ratings for movies and other online media, as well as apps and games and things of that nature. So that is a good resource for families that we should get out there as well.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I just wanted to.
I feel like you guys are framing up.
You got anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Do you have any questions for Kevin?
On to your compliment. The recently, the, well, last year and up until like halfway through this year, the Power School was like, clicked my schedule, like, was really hard to get your schedule. And then like, about halfway through here, we got it's all we do, and we're like, yeah, now, like, it's exactly what the teachers see, and it's like, oh, they've never heard of it.
Yeah, and that's thanks to Pearson, they finally fixed the problem.
Just take the credit.
We are often at the mercy of the vendor that produces the software, but that's one that, you know, Power School has gotten a lot better for both teachers, staff and families over the years, so we continue to put resources into that platform.
I'd like to commend Kevin for his work. Five years ago when I came, the question was, how can we infuse technology into the curriculum? And Kevin had a vision, as well as helped to organize the technology committee that got things going. He has all the pieces of a myriad of details that need to happen to make technology come together. Everything from expanding broadband, which you did last year with mass broadband, it's saving the town $100,000 a year, but it's also up the capacity so teachers can live stream into classrooms. We can now use the technology. At the same time, we're building and deploying units to classrooms, we're working on things like that. Kevin gave you a list of things, the details of the programs we're using, we now have books online, we are able to use things like programs online that can use discovery education without fear that it's going to shut down in the middle of being used because of capacity. So I'd like to commend Kevin, he's been such a valuable administrator to the team, he's often behind the scenes, but he's a man that we rely on every day to get things done, and he's done an outstanding job.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. But it's really a kudos to the, my staff who have dealt with that triple increase in equipment to support, but also to the faculty and staff who have really embraced it. It makes our job easy, you know, the IT support has really changed, you know, IT services really changed. We don't have to provide as much support and hand-holding anymore. It's really about the teachers that are embracing it in the classrooms with the students. So I think as that's changed, we just want to be here to support what's going on in those classrooms and in the town offices.
Kevin's recently been written up in Long Meadow and some town, in some technical magazines because of our work, the broadband and increased capacity to bring technology to classrooms. So, well done, Kevin.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And I just wanted to finish up by saying, and then you can go, that, you know, four years ago when I got on the committee and just a little bit after Marie came to Long Meadow, we were still in the process of transitioning to an integrated town and school IT department. That had just taken place. We were still going to capital planning every year and trying to convince them that individual computers met their definition, even though they probably didn't. And we were struggling with getting our funding for technology through the capital planning budget. You know, and Kevin has been such an advocate and so persuasive at the Select Board level, at this committee level, in, you know, moving that money into our budget and being able to fund a lease program for our technology and supporting the almost 2,000 pieces of technology that really didn't exist five years ago in our schools. And, you know, and replacing the servers, taking on the town's IT and their failing infrastructure at the time. And it wasn't failing because Victor was doing a bad job, Victor was doing the best possible job he could have done, and there was no money for him. So the town is better off because of the work that Kevin and his department have done, and I think that needs to be recognized time and time again, because everything he outlined here today did not exist four and a half years ago. And that's huge, it really is. So, not to mention the fiber optic network that we have, that he seemingly got through capital planning in a 20-minute conversation, so that was impressive.
Didn't cost the taxpayers a dime.
That's right.
We like that.
So, thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Okay, great. So back, I guess, back in order now. We've got a bunch of committee, or a bunch of policies to approve. They were posted for first reading on March 9th. We received zero input on any of them. The first policy for consideration is DJE, which essentially changes the bidding requirements from a $25,000 threshold to a $35,000 threshold for public bidding. So that's Chapter 30B.
Right.
Yes, so I'll entertain a motion.
I move on the recommendation of the Policy Review Subcommittee that the school committee approved policy DJE bidding requirements as presented.
Any further discussion? Or actually, in a second.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? I'm a little rusty. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor. Motion carries, 5-0. The next is the policy GCCD, domestic violence policy. This was a, this is a policy that pertains to the conditions under which a staff member may take domestic violence leave. We received zero comments on this one as well, and I'll entertain a motion.
I move on the recommendation of the Policy Review Subcommittee that the school committee approved policy GCCD, domestic violence policy as presented.
Second.
Yeah, second, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor. The motion carries, 5-0. And finally, or actually not finally, I'll entertain a motion on Policy Section JH, Student Absences and Excuses. This is a update to a policy that governs the conditions under which students may take absences. The absences that they are allowed to take before becomes an issue academically. And we also made amendments to the MAS-C policy with regard to the amount of time in which parents are notified that their child did not show up to school. So I'll entertain a motion on that.
I move on the recommendation of the Policy Review Subcommittee that the school committee approved policy JH, Student Absences and Excuses as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in, or, any further discussion, I should say? All those in favor? Aye, the motion carries unanimously. And finally, Policy Section JII, Student Complaints and Grievances. This policy section was amended from the MAS-C draft policies to reflect legal counsel's opinion on, under the conditions in which students can appeal disciplinary grievances to the administration and the school committee. I'll entertain a motion on JII.
I move on the recommendation of the Policy Review Subcommittee that the school committee approved policy JII, Student Complaints and Grievances as presented.
Great.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor. The motion carries unanimously. All right, the next thing up is the superintendent report, so Marie, I will hand it over to you.
Great. The first major event happening is the Williams Principal Search, and the committee is underway. I've given you a detailed outline of what to expect over the next several weeks. I sent this out to the staff today, I'll be sending out to parents at Williams tomorrow so that they're aware of the process. We've already advertised on April 10th, and the posting will close Friday, May 1st. The committee will review resumes next week from May 5th to May 8th with the intention of choosing several candidates to interview. The interviews will be conducted on May 11th and May 12th by the committee, and there's a list of committee members there. Also in addition to the committee members today, Beth Nelson, the Assistant Principal at Glenn Brook Middle School, was also added to the committee, so she'll, she'll bring another viewpoint to that committee. So again, interview is conducted May 11th and 12th with the hopes of announcing three finalists on May 13th. Candidates will hopefully be scheduled to visit Long Meadow Public Schools on May 14th, 18th, or 22nd. They'll each be given one day where they meet with staff, they meet with central office administrators, parents, and school committee members, selected members. Committee members will also visit the candidate's current place of employment on the 20th, the 21st, or 22nd. I'll narrow the pool based on recommendations from committee members to one finalist, complete reference checks, and negotiate a contract. If all goes well, then I'll make a final announcement to the public by June 5th, 2015.
Is there any question, are there any questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, are these like? I, you know, didn't sign up to, or ask to do it, but can we go and listen, or are they going to be like, any way to know, you know, just to be involved if you aren't on?
Yeah, private, Michelle, beginning the first part of the process, because people keep it confidential, but once we announce three, that's public and you're welcome to come to everything. We'll visit with PTO, we'll visit with, with staff, things like that, and you'd be welcome to observe those.
Okay, all right. And if, and if anybody doesn't, you know, drops out and you need somebody, I would be able to do it knowing the dates now, you know, I just didn't know if they were going to be at night, and I know that they were supposed to be, but if, I would like to, if, knowing that they're after redistricting, I can have more availability and would do it if somebody came up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a fun experience, let me tell you.
It is. If we need a replacement, I'll give you a call. So that's the first thing. Then the second thing is I'd like to update you on redistricting and give you a presentation on what's happening with redistricting. And I'll just move here so that you can see the screen. First of all, I'd like to review the timeline of what's happened over the past year, so you have a sense of what's, what's gone on. In October, the enrollment committee met and identified necessary tasks. We got enrollment data from NASDAQ, we, we just, I'm sorry, we met and decided what I should follow up on, and I did that with the help of the central office and Janet offered to help out as well. So we got enrollment data from NASDAQ, we plotted clusters of students where they lived in several neighborhoods, we identified space issues at schools, we analyzed where residents new to Long Meadow are moving, we ordered large maps of districts in order to pin student locations. So a lot of organizing was done in October. From this point on, I saw, I saw the work, oversaw work from November to February, and in February, I recommended that the enrollment committee be expanded to include a full redistricting committee so that we had community involvement in the process. In November, we analyzed, I analyzed the data from NASDAQ with my internal team, realized we needed more information because we did not have specific information on elementary schools. So I asked them to identify Blueberry Center and Wolf Swamp and to do projections for each school over five years. Looked at the neighborhoods and numbers of students in those neighborhoods, reviewed space needs at each elementary school, identified what programs would be housed at each elementary school. ELL, it was decided would remain at Blueberry because currently all the students in the ELL program are in the Blueberry neighborhood. We also determined that the preschool, it had been recommended, should be placed at Wolf Swamp. This is due to the fact that the preschool contains special needs students, and many of those special needs students migrate into the program that's at Wolf Swamp. In addition, we also share staff between the preschool and the program at Wolf Swamp, and we were losing valuable staff time to them traveling back and forth from Center to Wolf Swamp. So the administrative team agreed that the best location for the preschool was at Wolf Swamp. We also looked at special education programs. It was important to us that we housed different programs at different schools, no one school should be overcrowded because that would be a violation of civil rights if we were to do that. You have to make sure that, that it's spread out, that no one school is heavily special In December, we reviewed the new updated enrollment information. We mapped and pinned where students resided in different parts of towns to get numbers. We found that some neighborhoods had too few students, while Proposal A had approximately the correct number of students that would make a smooth transition moving from Blueberry to Center. We examined data from the previous redistricting committee to find out that they had previously used Proposal A as the neighborhood. I identified Proposal A as fitting the criteria as identified by the enrollment committee. I checked actual numbers of students that would be impacted by grade level, I had the help of Marie Pratt and Janet Robinson in doing so. In January, we verified enrollment data for Proposal A, reviewed staffing needs based on redistricting. The principals at the elementary schools met, they took a look at the projected numbers if redistricting occurred without grandfathering, and they worked forward budget proposals that will be presented later showing where cuts would take place. They, we developed a budget based on redistricting for 1516. In February, we expanded the number of students in streets to balance enrollment at schools because when we looked at the numbers, we were still shy, some students, to make a successful redistricting transition. In February, I sent a letter to the community, invited community members to sit on the committee. In March, the redistricting committee began, and we assigned the Data Subcommittee and Transition Subcommittee to begin exploring further options and to look at transitioning. We developed cost analysis and budget impact if redistricting is not implemented this year, and we researched out-of-neighborhood students, because that was one request, that if we did not take any students that were out of neighborhood, then possibly we wouldn't need to redistrict, and we found out that that wasn't so.
Marie, when you say out-of-neighborhood, are you talking about students who are either school choice or coming through a contract?
School choice, MECO, children of staff members, parental requests, so somebody who doesn't live in the neighborhood could request to go there. In April, we expanded the study to five options, Proposals A through E. The committee eliminated Proposals B and D, and they voted to grandfather in rising fourth graders, so next year's fifth graders would remain at Blueberry. We held a forum and presented Proposals A, C, and E. The committee then eliminated Proposals C and E, and the next meeting is on April 29th to decide on grandfathering. The questions to ask, will all students be grandfathered, and will siblings of fifth graders be grandfathered in? Michael, you brought it up, and parents brought it up earlier, it will be important that students on IEPs, Individual Education Plans, those will be determined student by student.
Marie, what about 504s?
504s, they would also have discussions about that as well.
And not to get through the weeds on this question, but how, what is the process going to be from an administrative perspective on talking with those parents about what their preferences are, or, you know, asking them, or identifying those parents who would prefer to see their children stay, those children on IEPs, I mean, or, you know, what is the process by which we're going to make those evaluations?
Team meetings are set up for the spring, and almost every child's already scheduled. Mark would have to take a look at the list and make sure that whoever is not scheduled has a meeting with the parent, so that that can be discussed. Katie?
So just trying to stay a step ahead, what about an appeals process for a parent who isn't happy with the decision that the team makes? Is there?
They'd have to go through the special ed appeals process. They'd have to go through the special ed appeals process.
Okay.
So, so they'll have a meeting, and in that meeting, a team will say, you know, hear what the parents are saying, and if they say, "My child struggles with transition," let's say, and their educational experience would be depleted, then the team would decide that...
The team decides that. If there's a disagreement, we'd have to go to the appeals.
Okay. And we have that in...
Mm-hmm. It's all in place, it's a state-mandated procedure that you follow.
And can we, are we able to guarantee that an appeals process meeting takes place prior to the beginning of school year?
We don't, we'd have to work that out.
Okay. Because that's going to be a point of contention.
I was just going to say, well, in staffing, how will, you know, will we know before June 1st how some of these things play out, and...
Right.
Marie and I've had that discussion. There are actually very few impacted special needs students, the majority will be remaining at Blueberry, so we, we will work through that.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, obviously, the redistricting subcommittee has not made a recommendation, so, you know, dealing with what they voted on right now is, I mean, that's purely where I'm coming from, is what the proposal currently stands as. You know, I think that we, you know, certainly need to make, I guess, an extra or our best effort to ensure that that process is done as fairly and openly, I mean, as open as an IEP meeting can be, you know, for, for at least those parents, because I know that, you know, I've heard from, from several parents, and I know Kim's heard from several parents who have students with IEPs in those affected neighborhoods, whose main concern is that transition, and, you know, and obviously, I think that the majority of parents we've heard from are also concerned with that transition, but, you know, we obviously know that in, in this case, there is, you know, a documented individual assessment plan, you know, which, which, which could have an impact on, on how they transition, you know, and we need to be sensitive to that. We need to be sensitive to that entirely, but obviously, in these cases, we need to be...
I'll, I'll be addressing the transition plans later on because I agree, it's, it's an extremely important part of the process.
Absolutely.
Katie?
Well, I, just, with, to be fair to everybody involved, I think part of what's holding up, like, the transition plan is just not knowing which students are coming, so, you know, I, I think that sort of the impetus is in us to make this decision so that Donna can, and Marie, and that all of the team really can work together to make sure that we have this in place for all of our kids, so...
No, that's a fair, that's a very fair point.
My question, going back to your statement about the special needs kids and how there's a small percentage of those, the need, the special needs kids that might even actually be going through the transition. We're hearing from parents that have kids, maybe not on IEPs, but still having, I mean, I know I'm hearing, I heard a lot more last week, from parents that have kids that are possibly needing, I'm trying to figure out how to, how to say this correctly. If we're, we're complaining about the resources, and if we're going to keep all of the kids at one school, is there a plan to make sure that some of the other kids that are still being left there are going to get the attention that they might not be getting right now because of the high enrollment? Does that sound right?
Marie's already requested an additional special education teacher, she's looking at the numbers right now, and this is the time when people begin to look at class size and, and this, and as the data is indicating, there are not as many students that are in special needs that will be part of this redistricting, so that's one request that's on my list already.
Okay. I just want to make sure that...
And that would always be based on the numbers?
Yeah.
And it, it's, there's been an influx in the number of special education children, so that's on our watch list.
So we need to keep in mind that those classrooms are, might not shrink.
Correct, correct.
Right.
So there could be a need for more staff.
There might even need, there might, we might even need more special ed classrooms than we actually have right now.
Correct.
Just...
That's a, that's, yeah.
Just something to think about, as we're keeping the kids on the IEPs in the school, we still need space.
Right, and that's, the special education children and their staffing is always done by looking at them, and we have added different numbers at different schools based on numbers of students on IEPs.
Right.
So in terms of the kids that might not be documented on a 504 or an IEP, if their parents feel that they have a difficult time transitioning and that this will affect them educationally, do they have a place to come and, you know...
They can meet with me and bring forward their case.
Would they be able to have a case study, or not, not a, but would they be able to have a team of teachers or something, you know?
We normally just run that through me.
Okay.
But I certainly would gather input from the principal and from the teachers.
Okay, that's right.
I then conduct an investigation. They come to me, they bring forward what evidence they have, they speak to me about the need to be a child, I then research that and then make a decision.
Okay. And, and again, just on timeline, because we're working for June 1st so that we have the staffing in place, what do we, are we going to be able to meet that June 1st deadline?
Yes, staffing, we, we will be able to meet that deadline. We will.
Yeah, it's also, I mean, it's less of an issue around, I mean, the June 1st deadline with, that's, that's only for moving staff, it's not necessarily for hiring more staff.
Right, no, I know, but if we're, if we're on that deadline to figure out this for the grandfathering, but there's a large number of children who might be in consideration or something like that, then that will affect the staffing shift, so...
We already have all those numbers, we, based on, every time the committee meets the redistricting, we run numbers. We've been running them, what happens at fourth and fifth, rising fourth and fifth graders who are grandfathered, or if the siblings are grandfathered, we're looking at all those scenarios, and with that, we're looking at the impact on staffing.
Okay.
Okay, and then we, we held the forum and presented Proposals A, C, and E. The committee eliminated Proposals C and E. In the next meeting, we just talked about, we'll ask the questions whether to grandfather all students or siblings of fifth graders. When the committee met and as we worked through the process, we've looked at the following priorities: balance enrollment at all three schools, provide similar educational experiences for all our elementary students, monitor the safety of students, determine suitable boundaries that maintain neighborhoods, reduce the need for busing, and provide a smooth, thoughtful transition plan. We have NESDEC that does enrollment data, and I'm going to show you that on our website, we have a complete report that was put on the redistricting site, and I'm happy to walk you through this at another meeting. But this talks all about NESDEC, the enrollment projections that they do. They use the survival ratio, survival cohort ratio, which looks at the number of women in town that could actually become pregnant, they look at the number of housing turnovers, they look at economic development to see whether a town's going to grow or decline, they look at empty lots to see whether a building can happen, there are so many factors that go into this. NESDEC also does more than most companies in that they take your enrollment every year. I think, Kim, you were mentioning how our census data has not been accurate because a lot of people don't file, and then our numbers surge when they come into the kindergarten, so that, this, this gives you that. I'll give you a, a quick snapshot in that it shows that our enrollment's going down, but again, each, they're updating this, and it seems to be going down a little bit less than before.
You know, we had...
This, this gives you the historical data, so if you look online, it will show you everything from, that's, that's gone back from 1998, and it will go, it will go up 10 years in advance what, what our enrollment is. But it shows you the historical percentage change, is that there's a reduction in population of about 500 students, it's down about 14% over the past 10 years. This shows what the enrollment has been, just again, in a bar chart that shows you that we've gone from about 3,000, we've gone from 3,367 students down to about 2,900. The one thing that I did share with the enrollment committee is that they said that we had a healthy surge in population, there were 77 new students in grades, two to eight, last year, so that we are seeing some, some growth at that due to the new families moving into town. So again, I'll walk you through this full report, but that's, that's online, but this is the follow-up that I asked for. This, when I'm reporting and trying to gather data, I wanted to know specifically what was happening at the elementary schools, because when you look at the NESDEC data in the report, they give it, give us, they do that on a system-wide report, and what we really needed to do is to take a look at what's happening at elementary school. They will give us projections that are 10 years out, when you look at the cohort survival ratio, you try not to use it more than five years out because it's not as reliable. They will use that in particular if you built, if you're doing a new building or something like that, but really, you want to look at five years, that's the most reliable data. You can see that the enrollment is projected to go down over that period of time, but if you take a look at 1920, you still see that Blueberry has a good 80 students more than, the approximately 80 students more than Center and Wolf Swamp.
Okay.
So this, to me, says that we definitely still need to redistrict. When we took a look at the schools and we did a space comparison, we, we looked at the number of classrooms that each of the schools had, as well as how the classroom spaces were being used. You can see that Blueberry has more sections at almost every grade level than the other two schools. It has five first grades while both Center and Wolf Swamp have three. It has four second grades while there are three at each of the other two schools. The third grade has five sections at Blueberry while Center and Wolf Swamp have three each. The fourth grade has four sections while Center and Blueberry have three, and the fifth grade has four sections while the other two have three and three. At Blueberry, it's also, so it has seven more sections than the other two elementary schools. And I asked them to define how their spaces were used. Blueberry reports four special educators are in the upstairs resource room at Blueberry Hill. As we've expanded staff and the number of kids in IEPs, you can see that we're becoming overcrowded in those rooms, putting us in jeopardy of being out of compliance. There were three staff in the reading room, the downstairs resource room has three staff in the big room, one in the small office, and the ELL teachers share space with the special education teachers. The ELL population, that's English language learners, has also grown substantially over the past two years, creating a need for more space and sharing, and another thing that the auditors won't like is that ELL is sharing space with special education. Center school, the teachers currently do not need to share any classroom space, they have plenty. But there was one time during the day where there are two staff members with three children in one large classroom, they choose to do this because the classroom is so big, it does not interfere with each other. They have options to go to other empty spaces if, if they wanted to, and they choose not to do that. It should be noted that Center will have four empty classrooms once the preschool moves to Wolf Swamp. So while we have students that are overcrowded in closets at Blueberry, having four teachers to one room, we have the potential to have four empty classrooms at Center. Wolf Swamp, the reading teacher and a reading coach share space, the reading coach works primarily with teachers, so that is not a problem. PT and OT share spaces, this is typically done in all the schools because they're usually part-time people, and that's not at all uncommon to have them sharing. Any questions on the space? One other question that we asked ourselves, we have heard from the principals that enrollment seems to be surging, particularly in the first grade. It's an anomaly in Long Meadow, whether students are going to private kindergarten, we think is one factor, we think that students are coming back from Montessori, we think that some people don't like the age limit that we've put, that you have to be five by September 1st, and then we also have people that moved to town that decide that Long Meadow is a great system and they'd like their children enrolled in first grade. So what we did is we, we took a look at all the new enrollments by grade in, at each, at each school for 2014, 2015, to see where the new students were coming from, and this is what the data shows us. In the first grade, Blueberry Hill had 19, Center had 14, Wolf Swamp had 11. Second grade, Blueberry had eight new students, Center had seven, Wolf Swamp had two. Third grade, Blueberry had six new students, Center had two, Wolf Swamp had four. Fourth grade, Blueberry had five new students, Center had five, Wolf Swamp had four. And in fifth grade, Blueberry and Center had four new students while Wolf Swamp had three. I'd like you to note the first grade in particular and notice that surge. So what the principals report is accurate, we have a, a high amount of new students that do come in in first grade, and they've been reporting this for the past couple of years, so...
Yeah, I was going to actually ask, do we have information on how many years in the past... How, how many of the past, like, 10 years have we added first grade sections? Because I, I know that we've done it, what, three times in the last four years?
We've done it, yeah. I haven't gone back that far, I could certainly do that if you'd like to see it.
I mean, it's, I, it's just, I mean, obviously, it's a trend, but it'd be interesting to quantify.
It's, it's an ongoing trend, the principals have been reporting this, and it's a K1 that we continue to add new grade levels in particular.
But I think it'll be interesting to see, like, what the full-day kindergarten program does to that now, to see if it's continuing with that trend, so...
Because we're getting more kids into the...
Because we're bringing, it's a reason that we had a surge in first grades, we never, I couldn't get into full-day kindergarten when I moved here, so my child went somewhere else. So we had a lot of children going to full-day kindergarten somewhere else.
Interesting.
So I wonder if it will be, but at the same time, though, did...
Interesting point.
This past year, the year before this, I guess, we had space in full-day kindergarten, is that, we...
Well, at Center and Wolf Swamp, we did...
But not at Blueberry?
Not at Blueberry every year. Some years, there were two sections of full-day or one because there wasn't enough to fill two, so parents would be put on a waiting list.
So hopefully, this year, with the kids in the full-day kindergarten, all of them...
But that's, that's for this year still?
That's for, no, this is the first year we did, we offered full-day to anybody who wanted it.
No, no, I mean, like, these numbers that we're looking at here, Marie, are these...
That's this year.
This for this year.
Just this year.
Just this year. But I'll be happy, we'll go back and we'll get that data for you, so you can see.
That's history.
But that will be interesting to watch, to see if full-day does impact these numbers.
Should help them not be incoming.
Do you have anything for, so when you're going back to, would you mind also looking and seeing what we have for new kids registering for the incoming first grade for 2015, 16?
Do they have a list? I know you've changed your kindergarten list every week. Do you have changed your first grade list, too?
Right now, enrollment's just going on, we couldn't give you accurate numbers, it's way too early to even make a projection for you.
Well, I know we always have to add in August because you get that surge over the summer. Everybody wants to be in their house by August.
You'll get your first surge, then August, we, we see a jump.
Kim knows. She knows all about that.
I lived it.
Yep. All right, so we'll try and go back over a couple of years, but we will watch that to see if the trending changes with the full-day kindergarten.
I mean, it's still not going to impact the number of kids that are in our schools, it's just going to mean that they're coming in kindergarten instead of first grade.
Right, you'd just be curious to know. It's census is continuing to be off a little. That's, you know, I mean, I've only been here two years, but the two years that I've been here, it's been off.
I, yeah, I just don't know that, like, historically, the data that we used, it's been thrown for kind of a loop, so I think it'll take a while to even out again and be able to give us those projections.
Yeah, and it would be helpful if that census data was correct, but again, I think being in, being a desirable school district, I think you're always going to have people moving in that are going to throw the data.
And our houses were, the values were down the last couple of years, and so I feel like more people could move into town that might not have been able to.
Exactly. Okay. So when we looked at the programmatic needs of the, of the district, this is one of the ways we started off. Administrators talked about the programs and locations, were they at the right place? Did we have the right balance of programs in school? Again, the preschool was, it was recommended to move to Wolf Swamp for the educational reasons that I just discussed. The following recommendations were made: ELL should remain at Blueberry, preschool will move from Wolf Swamp, will move to Wolf Swamp, two LLD, those are, language learning disabled classrooms to remain at Blueberry, then our PALS and LINK programs that are already at Wolf Swamp will remain there, and our two LLC programs were to remain at Center. But that gives you an idea of how balanced it is at the schools and the different programs that we have. There is also a smaller ELL, English Language Learner Program at Wolf Swamp, where the needs right now are different, so there's warrants having the two programs, but at some point, we may be looking to move the whole program to Wolf Swamp, I mean, to Blueberry for the same reason we talked about consolidation of staff and to be able to better service students in one facility. Some people have asked why keep these programs in the district, and I just wanted the committee to understand, as you already do, but to reiterate, that it's a win-win for everyone. It's the least restrictive environment, we provide a better education for our students in sending them out of district, children get to know each other and get to make friends in Long Meadow, it's cost-effective, we have saved over $750,000 in the past four years by building our own programs. Susan Bertrand did an outstanding job of developing these programs, we now have other districts looking at our high school program to pay us tuition to come in, so that these programs are really paying off. We have high-quality programs that are good for kids. So it's good because we're bringing our own students back to their neighborhood schools and to at least district schools, it's a win-win for everybody to do that. So I fully support continuing to build these programs and bring our special needs students We looked at the staffing, if Proposal A was implemented, this data is from January, it does not include grandfathering in the fifth grade, so that we have new, new data that's been drawn up recently for that. But this is how the budget was developed, we looked at the grade, the number of students, how many would be redistricted, how many would be, what would be the new class size, how many teachers would be needed, what the students would be, what students would be in each class. This is Blueberry's data, and I'll give you a minute to look because next... This is Blueberry's data, and I'll give you a minute to look because next will be Center's. So you could see the class, the class size, this is how we always do it. You have 16 at the first grade, 20 at the second. Third is where we always track this. We have 23 slash 17, and this is how we do it. 23 is on the cusp, it's too high, so that we watch to see if kids move in or out, and that's on our watch list to see whether that needs another teacher. So we, we put minus two, possibly minus one teacher there. Grade four had 20, and grade five had 22.
Marie, that, this is where I wanted to ask some...
Sure.
That column where you have the plus and the minus?
Yep.
Where did you get that negative two there, in that first column for grade one? What's that minus two, what is that for?
If you look at the first column, it says there were 80, take the third grade for example, there were originally 80 students in that class, and then 12 of them would be redistricted if none were grandfathered in. It would leave class size of 68.
Yep.
So you divide that between, by three teachers, we give you a class size of 23.
Right.
Or 68 divided by four teachers would give you a class size of 17.
Right, what's that minus two minus, slash minus one?
That's how many staff, what the staffing change would be. If we kept class sizes of 23, we'd reduce by two teachers, and if we kept class size of 17, we'd be able to reduce by one teacher.
So...
Because it would be balanced between the two schools.
So you're saying that after, because, after the second slide, I'll, I'll explain to you what I'm confused about from the math, that, from the way I was doing the math in terms of the overall staff between, you know, one proposal versus the other proposal. You know, when I added up, let's say, Scenario A, which would have been Blueberry now without redistricting, I got basically 21 sections, so 21 teachers. If you were kind of favoring, you know, if you said 20 students per class, I use that as a number, that's where I added up the students in that, or I added up to get 21 sections. And then at Center, under the circumstances without redistricting, I got 14 sections, so like 35 sections. And then I took the redistricted class size and number of teachers, and that's where I added up 19 sections for Blueberry and 19 sections for Center, which gave me 38. So that was adding staff, you know, adding two or three staff versus cutting them. So that's where I was confused, are we adding staff, are we cutting them, you know, and what's in the budget for this?
I will take your questions. The principals were the ones who were doing the class size reports, but let me take your questions, go back and answer you thoroughly at our next meeting.
Okay, perfect.
So, and we'll check, we'll run all that data again, Tom, and I'll take a look at it and go.
I have chicken scratch, I'll just, I'll take a photo of it and...
When I look back, this might help, just when you're talking about like the current number of staff.
Which page is it?
Four. Right, when I look at our sections at Blueberry Hill right now, on the space comparison, so there's 25 sections right now, and at Blueberry, and 18 at Center. So I think some of the movement is...
From last year, from this year to next year, you're saying?
Right, so, yeah, so that big fifth grade goes and that's one, you know what I mean? So when you, when you're adding it up like this, I think that that's kind of a confusing presentation.
Okay.
But when you look back here and you're looking at like the hard numbers, it makes more sense to add them up that way, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, I just, in terms of like looking to next year and which scenario does what from a staffing perspective, it seems to me like not redistricting is actually less staff than redistricting mathematically. And that's where, you know, that's where I took the column where it says Blueberry's potential data and the students there, and I divided them by 20, just to use a raw number. And I got, you know, I can walk you through it, but, you know, for grade one at Blueberry, that's three sections. This is without redistricting, in that second column there that says students. In grade two, I assumed, you know, if I was being safe, I had assumed five. Four for 80, five for 95, four for 83, that gives you 21 altogether. Then if you go over to the number of teachers needed for the redistricting plan, this is if Proposal A is implemented, you add up those sections. And I, for the last one with 66, I felt like we might want to bank on four for that, I don't know, was that, so then I, that was 19 sections. So you have 21 to 19. And then, but then if you're looking at the overall staffing, you look at the second page at Center, you add up that first column, which is without redistricting, and you have that first column, two, three, 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 which adds to 14. And then you go to the number of teachers needed if you redistrict, and you have three, four. I aired on the cautious side of four, 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 and that's 19. So then you add those numbers up and you have 35 without redistricting, and you have 38 with redistricting. So we're down, we're adding staff by this plan.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have to ask Marie and Donna how they came up with this and answer those questions for you next meeting. It looks like they went on the lower number of the proposal, because if you look at the last column, the staffing change, you have Blueberry, which is a negative five, negative four, and then Center, which is a plus two, plus four. But I think what we need to do is we need to update the enrollment charts to see what the numbers are right now, to see what movement has been, as well as monitor those over the summer.
I mean, because I'm, I'm not looking at their budget compared to last year, and I'm not looking at their budget compared to, like, Blueberry's compared to Center, I'm looking at it from an overall staffing and an overall budget. And if we're doing all this and it's gonna cost us more in the end, you know, then, I don't know, it's just...
I see, you're saying there's, you're saying that, I, I, sorry, it took me a minute to get what you're saying.
Well, that's why it's hard without the visual, but basically, when I added up the information that I have, I found that we have 35 in one scenario.
In 37.
And we have 38 is what I, you know, by airing on caution, 38. And I want to know if we, what we planned for in terms of staffing, because I don't want to end up cutting things that we think we have right now in an emergency to staff whatever we find that we're doing.
It looks like they aired on the lower end of that. So let me ask them again and let me clarify that and get you actual sections. Let's get the most recent class size right now, redo these charts and report back to you before, at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but we don't have classes of 23.
No, no, I did, four times, there is 12, 15, 18. Six, I went with it.
Because, that's 66, that's, and 66 was the one where I felt like it was, if we get a couple more students, we really should prepare ourselves for four, just because, yeah. That's where you put, okay, so she's looking on...
What chart are you on?
We're looking at Blueberry's potential data. So on this one, and there's the number of teachers needed, fifth grade, with the proposed redistricting, we have three there with 66 students. When she's estimating the number of teachers, she's actually putting four because 22 is kind of high. And if we get like a couple more students into the fifth grade next year.
Which Blueberry seems to...
Right, it seems, you know, we got four last year, whatever it was. So she's putting, that, that gives us 19 teachers needed versus the 21 at the school if we didn't redistrict, and, yeah, and...
Then you go over to Center's page.
Center School, it gives us 19 teachers needed, but whereas if we didn't redistrict it, we would only need 14.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me redo the chart and update. Let's do what enrollment is right now, and then have them do the staffing again to see what current numbers are.
This is, so this was from January?
This was January.
Without grandfathering.
Right, but we can update that information.
Okay, I mean, without...
January without grandfathering.
Okay, I'll have that for you.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't know about...
I can take a picture of this.
Right, so I don't, not to spend much time on this, but I went back and I was looking at the space, the comparison that you were going off of originally, right, the space comparison for this year?
It wasn't, it's staffing needs if Proposal A is implemented, that.
Okay, so what I come up with, you know, and I know you were at, being a little more, I would say conservative.
Just assuming we get new students, because...
So we, we either fluctuate between 18 or 20 teachers, right?
18, yeah.
And then based on Center, we either fluctuate between 19 or 21.
Well, so in, in Blueberry, we're at 21.
On, off the numbers you're going off of, right? Because as they are right now, with the high end, it's only 18.
No.
Show me what you're talking about.
Here, these numbers is what she's using.
Oh, you're going off the number of students, because I'm going off the number of teachers needed. Gotcha.
All of these total 21 staff.
Right.
All of these, if you put four here and four here, that totals 18 staff.
Okay.
All of these total 14, all of these total 19.
Which one are you talking about, for this column here?
38 and 35.
Where we're at 66, that's with redistricting, but...
Wait, this is saying that if we redistrict, we've got 19.
Yeah, I, that, you know, but even if it's 18, we still need more staff.
This is saying if we redistrict 21, if we redistrict 14, that's 35 versus 38 staff.
This is not redistricting.
Yeah.
Right, so if we don't redistrict, we would need 14 and 21, and that would be a 35 staff total. If we do redistrict, it's a 38.
I don't know, how many new students came in last year for fifth grade?
But we added 2.7 full-time staff, I thought, because one of these is a half-day program.
At Center?
Yeah.
In 2020, you always go safe.
You always keep it.
Point five is yours.
Oh, that's one.
That's why I did four, just because if I was a betting girl and we got four new students.
Yeah, that's...
Right?
All right, revise that.
They definitely would be in the watch list.
Me either. I, I think, I think I understand it more.
All right, so let's update those charts and get you what they're, what they're recommending right now, based on what the numbers they have today. And so Center, we just talked about as well, so, so what was the decision-making process? The decision-making, the decision-making process was first consideration, moving the preschool. The next thing was to order the large maps so that we could pin exactly where students were located, and we color-coded them by grade to see where cohorts of students lived. We tried a couple of different neighborhoods, but the numbers didn't work. Some of them, the numbers were just too few, and then other neighborhoods, we realized they would involve busing because of the way the roads looped around. We, we looked at the busing, the proposals that tried to keep neighborhoods intact, we took out those that did not keep the neighborhood intact because you needed more students from various areas. We identified students that needed to travel farther to get to Center than to Blueberry, and then we, there were too few students in the neighborhood, and then feedback from the police. So those are the decision-making factors.
What was, if I can just, what was the feedback from the police? Because I do know that kind of off, I'm not gonna say off-cop, but when we were, when we had our transportation committee meeting, this did come up, Proposal A did come up, and I know that John Stankwood said they would need one additional crossing guard.
Yeah, long-term, they'll need one, but there could be construction going on, so if there's construction, we want to make sure that we have more. I did say that we would look at the state money coming in because their budget is set in stone, to see if that happens, because with construction, that could impact it. They looked at, they looked at different plans, and they felt that having students in the same neighborhood clustered together were safer for students traveling by bike and walking, they didn't want to see students so spread out, because there's a safety factor of...
Okay, so they were, and they were referring probably more to the potential for, the rolling swing of E originally, right?
E or expanded neighborhoods.
Okay.
They looked at proximities to school, they looked at if the neighborhood was too expansive, the kids would be able to walk a bike together, making it dangerous for kids.
Sure.
They looked at, we reviewed the different streets where you'd need crossing guards, what were the dangerous intersections that needed to be identified.
And when they talk about the danger to kids, you, we're talking about more solitary travel to school, you know, kids on their own instead of in groups, and the potential for...
Correct.
Rather than crossing more streets or something like that.
They looked at both.
Even though the crossing more streets is, is an actual concern, I mean, both of these are actual concerns, but when you're saying, like, you know, they're concerned about the widespread nature of it, they were more concerned about kids traveling by themselves?
Correct.
Okay.
What was the construction?
With the casino coming in, there may be construction that's impacting that neighborhood. It's going to impact traffic throughout town, I think.
So if we take A, are we adding crossing guards, though, because that's a lot of the safety, okay, so...
I would recommend to school committee to do that. The state is sending more aid to Long Meadow than we anticipated. Steven Crane has said that there will be some money coming toward, to the school. The police chief has not been promised any of that state money coming in. I said that I would recommend to school committee that they fund three guards, that we make sure that we cover all the intersections in that neighborhood, if it is Proposal A. If, if there are traffic patterns that are going to be impacted due to construction, we need to make sure they're covered.
So and even without the construction, are we...
Converse and Laurel was in particular, do I have that right?
Yes.
Converse and...
Long Meadow. So they come out, they come out Farmington and Ellington and they're gonna go across, and there will be a crossing guard at that light with Converse and that bad area, there'll be a crossing guard, okay. And then two more Laurel, okay, those seem to be the neighborhoods I'm hearing about the safety concerns from.
Yeah, and we went through that, and we talked about the minimum being one, but when they talked about the possibility of more traffic due to the construction, I felt like we should, we should support in getting more crossing guards just to be, while, while the construction's going on, we don't want to take any chances with kids.
And that's, I mean, and that construction, it's not even, it's not even MGM construction, 91 is being, is starting in August. So, you know, that's gonna be a huge impact for the community as far as backup scope.
I'm glad I don't have to commute to Springfield right now because it's gonna be...
Try Boston.
Okay, and we have that in our budget, or we have the ability to it?
We will, when we get, when we get state money.
So, okay, it's not coming out of what we have right now?
No.
Okay.
Steven Crane has said that, that there was money coming our way, and we'll know more about that. I don't know the timeframe, Tom, do you?
Probably won't be until late this fiscal year, June, July, when the state budget's finalized.
I don't want to get into it right now, but we, we should have a conversation about why that money's coming out of our budget rather than other sources on general government, but that's for another time.
But I just thought, we, we just said it wasn't coming out of our budget.
No, I mean, like, why we would, why we would reallocate special revenues to the police department rather than having general government cover an increasing cost on their own budget. But that's, we can talk about that later.
Okay.
Okay. This is Proposal A, and you have this in front of you, but we went through all the charts and what the different scenarios would look like, we tried to get numbers. So for example, this is Proposal A for 2015, 16, fifth graders grandfathered at Blueberry, and it shows you how it impacts class size. The next chart is, again, Proposal A, neighborhood A, if you grandfathered the rising fourth Next is Proposal A, if you grandfathered third, fourth, and fifth graders. The next chart shows you grandfathering second, third, fourth, and fifth graders. Then it shows you first through fifth grade. Then this chart shows you Proposal A, if you had the case siblings and all the siblings grandfathered at Blueberry. This was shown, the next slide is Proposal C, which is no longer relevant because the committee has voted down, they're not going to move forward with Proposal C, so these next slides are irrelevant, but that, they're a part of the presentation made to the redistricting committee.
But I'm just going back to that last one, the Proposal A, if the siblings were grandfathered?
Yep.
So that's fifth graders grandfathered as well as their siblings?
Yes.
No, no.
No.
No, just the siblings.
This is only kindergarten siblings, I thought.
Oh.
Because Marie Pratt couldn't get them...
Bless you. Bless you. So it's, so this is one through five grandfathered, and their, their kindergarten siblings?
Right. Like, right, so that's like rising first graders, correct?
Right.
Is there a, um, chart that showed, or are you working on it for the next meeting? The fifth graders grandfathered plus their siblings?
Yes, um, we actually have the chart, it felt that you go to the redistricting first.
Yep.
So I'll send that to you after, um, the meeting. I'll send you the PowerPoint so you can see.
Because that, that current one doesn't look like much of a change. And I think that everyone at Center is gonna be really happy with the three-hundred kids.
I know.
All right, so Proposal C. And then, this is what we estimated, the cost to grandfather students at Blueberry, with or without adjustments. We would put back in the staff that was already there. If we grandfathered all the children in, um, that are currently there now, that would mean keeping not just siblings, but all of the kids, from the current kindergarten through the current fourth grade. You'd need to, we'd need to add back in two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars to the budget. And if you looked at making it equitable, in other words, to make sure that you have the same number of teachers per student, you'd have to add another eighty-two thousand dollars. It still does not address the space issue, that would still be a problem. Marie estimated that you'd need three to five additional classrooms in each modular, and this is, Michelle had some research, I had some research. I called Ludlow, because they are putting in two modular classrooms. They're paying a hundred thousand dollars for the site work to put the modular in, and then they're paying fifty thousand for two used classrooms. So that's where I came up with the number of a hundred and fifty for two used classrooms, because of the site work. But Marie said you'd need three to five additional rooms to take care of the overcrowding situation. And it also is dependent on whether there are three or four first-grade classrooms, again, we're watching the numbers. And the addition of these rooms would still require two staff members sharing rooms in reading and special education. Any questions on that?
Is there a reason why we never tried to add the additional staff needed for the equity this year?
Really, space. It's, it's, there's really no more room to put the additional staff.
So if we were to redistrict, would we, and assuming that the special ed population stays, can we make sure that we're making the staff equitable for, you know what I mean? If, if those kids all stay, then it sounds like we still need eighty-two thousand dollars.
Or at least the point-six special ed supervisor and...
Right.
Well, the special ed supervisor, with redistricting, we would take away, um, the assistant principal, but we would add in special ed supervisor, that's, that's the same as at the other two schools. If we redistrict, we will guarantee that there will be equity in staff. The only difference would be is if one school has more special education students than another, or another school has more ELL students than another, then there'd be differentiations in staff there. But in terms of everything else, reading, literacy, math, et cetera, they'd have the same. The only difference would be Wolf Swamp, which is a Title I school and has its own budget for Title I, so that they have additional staff and services because of that.
But if, if Kim's hearing that, and I, and I've heard it too, that kids are not getting into the special ed because there isn't staff...
Well, it's more the resource room, teachers, like, math resource teachers and the reading resource teachers that... I mean, I know, you know, some kids get in, you know, get somehow tested to need to go into the extra reading sources and...
So I think that, that might be more of a...
Wind block.
Yeah, like, the wind block, and we need to do a better job communicating about where kids are in the tiers and what we're doing to meet their needs, based on what tier they are in RTI, and how long, you know, I, I...
Well, no, I know, I was...
You know, it might just be that that, not saying, because I would really hate to believe that we're denying kids services that they need.
I, I know, but I, I mean, I heard it from three parents last week, and, you know, one of them was very adamant about feeling that her child was not in an, in an actual reading resource room, because the, the school knew that she was getting... No, because she knew she was getting a tutor. Her parent was paying for a tutor, so she didn't get into the services.
This will take care of equity around extra help with the wind block. Again, Marie's requested additional staffing in special ed, we're looking at those numbers. So that's something that I'm sure that we will honor. But we're watching the numbers, and again, we're making that list right now, so yes. So, when we look at Marie's request, I'll check out what the special education class sizes are at the other schools, and then we balance that to make it equitable.
Well, or, I mean, not so much equitable, but enough at each bill, you know what I mean? Like, it seems like Blueberry, with the special ed that they have right now, does not have enough. So can we look at, not talking about equity, but do they have enough for what they have there, you know?
Well, they had an extra special education teacher above Center School and Wolf Swamp in terms of their numbers, and we cut that out, but it sounds like we're going to have to put at least part of it back, if not the whole time.
Right, if the kids are staying.
Yep.
I mean, this, this issue of equity, you know, kind of, at least from my perspective, is, is kind of the, the impetus for why we began having this conversation, in addition to the space constraints. But I mean, they're, they're kind of are hand in hand with one another. You know, so, I, I mean, I think that's a good, it's a good question to ask, like, why... I mean, personally, and I, I think I kind of have to hold myself a little bit of accountable for this, because we've, you know, I've been on this committee for a few years. I don't think that I ever realized how we let it get to this point, where we don't have that sort of parity, even though, you know, we've done our best, but, I mean, even from a space perspective, it just, it's, it's... I don't think that I, I really sort of appreciated the impact that it's, that we've, you know, in all the great things we've done bringing these programs back, that we've kind of had on, you know, the entire school population, and, you know, but, I mean, I didn't know until this year that there was, and maybe it's because I haven't been to Blueberry this year, but that there's students being taught in closets. So that's, you know, that's shame on me, first of all, for not having realized that. But yeah, no, I mean, I think that from an equity standpoint, I think that's the whole reason why we're having this conversation, isn't it?
It is, and I know that, Kim, you've requested a tour, and we've set up tours so that people can see this, can see the situation. But again, rising English language learner population, which has required a class, more classroom space, rising special education, just not even special programs. Blueberry has an increase in the number of special education students just within its building, more so than the other two. And then you bring back the, the special ed programs that we've built. Those are the three factors that have led to pretty much this serious overcrowder.
So when you determine how much staffing there is for special ed, is it done by the students in the special ed program, or, you know, that have been identified as needing special education? Or do you do it based on the total population at the school?
Students on IEPs, they also have what we call grids, how much service they get per week. So you look at how much support, do they need support just for ELA? Do they need support for ELA in math? How many times a week do they need that? So you look at the service grids, as well as the number of students on IEPs, and determine it that way. So it really is very much pertaining to an individual school. It's, that's not something you can just say, everyone gets one.
Okay.
Next, I asked Donna for an update of the transition plan. She did a very nice job in updating the committee on what was happening with the transition plans. These are the plans to date. Principal Hutton will visit Blueberry to introduce herself and give a gift from Center students to each student at Blueberry on May twenty-eighth. Blueberry students will visit Center at ten-thirty a.m. on May twenty-ninth. They'll tour, welcome, and have a picnic on the green. There'll be an open house at Center at six-thirty p.m. and a presentation on June third. Transition plans, teams from Center and Blueberry will meet for placements, that'll be May and June. Parental input letters will be sent to Blueberry families, May thirteenth. They'll assign Blueberry penpills to Center on May fifteenth, and new family principal tour would be, um, set up in August. So these are the initial plans that are underway, that have come from the Transition Committee.
She gave me chills, talking about the, you know, plans that she had, rolling out the red carpet. But, you know, for those of you who weren't there and didn't see it, it was, it was, it made me excited, you know, it was...
She came right from kissing a lizard to that, too.
Kissing a lizard, but she's put a lot of thought into this. She's put a lot of thought into this, because I think she, being an elementary principal, understands that she wants us to go well. She wants the students to feel welcome, and she, she understands how important it is to the community. So next, the next meeting day is April twenty-ninth. We'll review the space at Blueberry again. Marie's going to come back and say, if certain grade levels were grandfathered in, what would that mean in terms of space? We'll discuss grandfathering, that, what would that mean space-wise at Blueberry, and review the number of siblings. We'll, we'll talk about, should siblings be grandfathered in fourth and fifth grade? Should they, the rising fourth, fourth graders, third graders? Because they've already voted that the rising fifth graders will be grandfathered in. We'll review the transition plan, and the committee hopefully will make final recommendations to me at that point, at which point I will look at all the information, continue to assess what's going on, and bring forward a recommendation to you.
When did you ask parents to respond to the survey by, that you put out for Neighborhood A?
Uh, they should have responded by today, I believe. So we'll have that information for the committee on Wednesday, too.
When you disseminate that for the committee, will you copy us on that?
Sure.
You know, I mean, only, and I only ask because we have sort of a compressed timeline on, uh...
It will all be in the PowerPoint that I put out on Wednesday.
Okay, great.
So when you get the PowerPoint, all the information we're talking about will be there.
Not that I, um, agree with this, but is it going to be televised?
Yes.
Okay.
It is.
I appreciate it, I just, I know it's setting a precedence for the rest of the subcommittees in our government, in our district, so...
I, I, I think it was a good thing to do. We've had a lot of people that have tuned in, and I think, um, a lot of people were very concerned what was happening. So I, I think it worked well that, that we did televise that.
I mean, ultimately, it comes down to if LCTV can do it, you know? So, because we've asked them to televise stuff, I mean, public forums that we've held, and, you know, they do as much as they can, you know, and they do a great job of it, but sometimes they're just not available.
I'm just thinking, you know, when this luck board does their finance subcommittee meetings, sometimes it would be really nice if those were televised.
Well, what room are they in?
They, I mean, technically, they could. It's just someone needs to submit a request.
Wouldn't you like to see it? You know, I mean, that's, there are things that are...
Well, that's, that's the entire town.
Exactly, I would like to see them.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I gotta, I have to, Joseph. You're not gonna be around forever.
Did you decide?
Yeah.
Person that makes the request?
I'm not gonna be the person that makes the request.
All right, um, so, I know that we asked a lot of questions during Marie's presentation. Does anybody have any additional questions, or should we save it for the eleventh, which I can imagine is going to be a very lengthy meeting as well?
I just, I was gonna make a comment, besides the other people that I've heard of, heard from. I've also heard from parents that live in Plan A, that have said to me that they are okay with moving, and that they just, that they don't want you to make it a choice for them. Because, um, if she is given a choice out of her street of five kids that might have to move to Center, if she chooses to do what she feels is the right thing and have her kids move to Center, she doesn't want her kid to see the other three neighbors being able to stay at Blueberry, and then she has to sit there with her kid and tell her why she has to send her kid, "You're doing the right thing," but to a third grader, "It doesn't matter that we're doing the right thing. It's just my friend next door gets to go to, to Blueberry, and you're sending me to Center." So she's kind of said, you know, this couple of parents have said to me, you know, "Let's make it, if you're, if you're gonna have me do it, have me do it with, with all my neighbors." I don't know, does that make sense?
I'll communicate that to the committee.
Uh, anybody else for Marie? I just wanted to quickly say that I know that you and this redistricting subcommittee have gotten a lot of feedback from the, from the public, and, uh, you know, I know that this is essentially the same presentation that you gave last week, and I think it did a, a really good job of incorporating their feedback, the community's feedback, and, you know, and also representing the work that did go into it, um, you know, and, and I appreciate your response to a lot of those, those comments at the forum, um, so... All right, um, I'm not gonna give an update, so, Joseph?
All righty. So, there are only twenty-three days left for seniors at LHS, but I'm not counting. The general feeling is that it will be, it is a bittersweet, uh, end to our high school career. Obviously, we're all very excited for our next steps, but we are going to miss LHS a great deal. On the personal front, I am very excited to tell you all, um, I'll be attending Bryant University, uh, Class of twenty-nineteen. I'm gonna be doing a double major in finance and accounting, and I'm very excited to be a Bulldog next year.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I'll pretend I didn't read your Twitter feed for that.
Thank you.
That's wonderful.
Thanks. Spring sports are in full gear. Today was a great day for the Lancers. Boys track, which is near and dear to my heart, as I am team manager, we won by one point, seventy-three to seventy-two against Amherst. Boys varsity lacrosse, uh, uh, won fifteen to five against Cathedral. Girls lacrosse, both varsity and JV, uh, won in their games against Minichog, which were across the street. And, uh, also softball, um, had a win eight to seven against Belcher Town. So definitely a great day all around.
Belcher Town needs to get beat after that hockey game. Not that hockey game, the girls' basketball game, that's what I meant.
Yes. As we mentioned in Mr. Rundus' report, so Q three report cards went out, um, the week, the Friday before vacation. This time around, with the electronic distribution, we actually got them a full day in advance, which is really cool. When me and the other members of the student subcommittee set out on this process of asking for the electronic report cards, I think that the most powerful thing is that we are able to get them quicker. Obviously, we were looking at the, the ecological benefit, lack of paper, but after some investigation, it really wasn't that big of a deal. When we did the surveys with Mr. Drunkley and the students and the parents, it was found that people still do prefer the paper report card, which I totally understand. But the reason why I think people also answered that they do like the, um, the added benefit of the electronic delivery is because, um, like, when you get your report card, you could crumple up, lose it really quickly, but when it's sent to your email, you can save it on your computer, and then, like, for example, if you needed to send to a college or anyone really for, like, uh, like a scholarship you're applying for, or even, like, um, for example, insurance, when you get your driver's license, if you send them a, a report card showing, like, uh, third honors, first honors, second honors, or something like that, you get a discount. And so, um, instead of having to go and, like, get a copy or find it and make a copy, it's just on your computer. So, I, uh, continue to endorse both electronic distribution and the paper report cards going out. All school elections will be taking place on May twenty-first, um, so they will be selecting the class officers for next year, and my successor. Good luck to them. The Class of twenty-nineteen, uh, I'm sorry, twenty-fifteen, that's my class. So High Meadow, which is our senior picnic, is this Thursday. Tickets are on sale till Wednesday. We're really close to getting to a full participation, participation, all two-hundred-and-fifty students. So really excited about that. Awesome announcement to make on the front of Prom. Prom is June fourth at the Log Cabin, and the price for Prom tickets for LHS seniors this year is five dollars, which is an eighty-three percent reduction from last year. We were able to use profits from our class play, which was the most successful in LHS history, to, uh, subsize the cost of both Prom, which is eighty-three percent lower, and High Meadow, which is, uh, five dollars lower.
Wow.
Um, graduation is going to be Thursday, June eleventh, at Symphony Hall. We're very excited for that, and more details to follow on that. The other thing I just wanted to mention in the report, um, I just jot down a couple of notes from Mr. Rundus', um, presentation, and it just reminded me, so we, they talked, uh, we talked about, um, computer science and STEM. From the time that I came into LHS as a freshman to today, when I currently take AP CompSci, I saw a total growth in the, um, the computer science programming offerings. I think that's really awesome. I remember freshman year, um, we did have the class, but I, I didn't hear too many awesome things about it, but now I hear nothing but really cool things. We both have AP CompSci for really advanced work, and we also have just regular CompSci, if you want to get a basic introduction to coding, HTML, all that kind of stuff. Mr. Rundus' talked about the update, uh, the upgrading of the internet systems. When we first moved into the high school, there were definitely some complaints about it kind of being slow, but, um, today, even today, well, still does have its slow days, it really does work a lot better. And also, the Google accounts that we mentioned, that's definitely, I think, that the, that was, other than Power School, which we implemented a long, long time ago, was probably like the best thing that we ever did.
I'm glad that you guys, not to interrupt you, but I'm glad that you guys, like, really came full circle on that, because I remember when we wrote the social media policy, the one piece of feedback I got from students on it was, "I really don't want my own email address, I really, I can't handle another email address." And I'm glad that you're using them, because, you know, we felt really strongly that it was important for Kevin's mission, but also for what we wanted to do in a long, you know, in a larger scope and scale, so I'm happy that you're using those.
Yeah, I don't know, um, I don't know if my personal opinion is shared by everyone in the, in the school, but absolutely.
Imagining it is.
As, as a class officer, using the, having the school emails where, you know, knowing what everybody's email is just by the, the first and last name combination, makes it so easy to send out, uh, information in blasts to everybody. The Google Drive system, having every teacher and every student accessible, all you have to do is type their name in, you don't even have to know what their email is, and it just comes right up. I mean, I think that was probably one of the most powerful things, um, that the district provided to me, so, yeah. And of course, any questions, as always?
No.
This is, uh, you guys only get two more, um, two more meetings with me.
That was my question, is do you know who your, your replacement is?
No, um, so, so I'm, there's myself, and then also we have, um, Robert and Ezra, who will also be graduating. And then, uh, currently on the committee is Nichelle Desouza. I haven't spoken with her, I don't know if she's planning on running, but she says, "Good luck." And then, um, I, I've seen people spoken to me that they have some interest, and obviously, I told them it's a really fun job, so...
At ten o'clock at night, yes.
So yeah, uh, May twenty, so the, May twenty-first, so that you guys get two more meetings with me, and then, um, after that, you'll meet the new me.
Sad.
You've done a great job, Joe.
Thank you very much.
You've been a great addition to the committee.
Thanks.
Yeah, you... Yeah, huge shoes. I mean, I'll, I'll say that, you know, usually, the people, the students who fill this seat, you know, they, they, they show a lot of the same qualities that you show, uh, but, you know, your dedication and, and the fact that you've been able to get so much accomplished, and maybe that's because you've done it for two years, but I'm thinking it's not, I think it's just because of who you are, has been just, it's been such a breath of fresh air to have, uh, you know, from the student representative, for sure.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely. So...
That's it.
Moving right along to finance report. Moving right along to finance report.
We have not met since our last meeting, but our next upcoming meeting will be the 6th, 2 PM.
Great. Other reports, I know SBC has not met recently, but there's a meeting for this week?
They postponed it. I do have an update.
Okay.
I met Paul Dunkley earlier today to discuss what's going on with the HVAC system and he says they're making great progress. They have found that the computer systems have not been speaking to each other on different devices, so they've made corrections to that and he thinks we're well on our way to repairing at least the heating system. We're now moving into cooling systems, so we have to make sure that everything's working in that area as well, so we'll have further news for you. I'm happy that the committee is not meeting right now because I would like to see us resolve these issues before we can begin to close out.
But that's the next step, is closing out, though.
That will be next.
Great.
But we're, we're in a much better position right now.
Legislative update, since John's not here, I'll just say that the House is in budget week right now and the Senate will be in budget week the week of the 18th. And it's anybody's guess where things go. They still don't have any rules, so they can't meet as committees yet, so your guess is as good as mine as to what things are gonna look like on the other side of things. Green team?
Nothing.
Okay. Ops sub?
I have a question for legislation. Did, I saw some things about Senate and the House changing the rules about the subcommittees. Did that ever happen?
They're in the middle of debating it right now. Usually, so, there's 25 committees, joint committees. They operate on a set of joint rules that are agreed to by the House and the Senate. The Senate's proposing some rule changes, some slight rule changes. The House has not agreed to them yet, so it's still in conference, but hopefully it'll, it'll get resolved soon. Right now, there are some committees operating off temporary rules, but that's tricky because if any member of either chamber says, "We don't like what's going on here," all the work just goes away, so nothing's really been happening yet.
Thanks.
Yeah, no problem.
I'm Ops Sub and we haven't, we met once and just really couldn't figure out what to do on the committee, so it's just, you know, if, if anyone has any suggestions about what we should do.
I do.
If there's anything, please let me know. I just, nothing has come up that has seemed to fall in that, so.
I mean, I know that the long-term, the long, yeah, the long-term plan has been, and we've been trying to get it going through three town managers now, field maintenance. And I know that that's something that we talked about during the retreat, but Stevens' hesitancy at the time was just that Carl Quist was leaving and he didn't wanna start engaging in that process until he had a new person onboard. He does now, for about six months or so, so I do know that right now the town is operating off of sort of some guidance that Barry Jarvis over at Park and Rec wrote in conjunction with probably Mike Deary at the time, just about like the level to which the field should be mowed and maintained, the type of sodding and, you know, the lining of, of different fields. I think that she's pretty confident that it needs to get updated as well. And I guess we're, you know, I guess the hitch right now is just that Mike Rabel's retiring, so we might wanna wait until his replacement comes onboard at the, you know, he's, he's retiring July 2nd. So, I don't know if there's anything for Ops Sub to do right this moment, but historically they've worked on the IT MOU, the maintenance MOU, just any sort of combined operational procedures with the town, where historically we have not gotten the greatest level of service all the time. It's gotten better, especially with our new town manager, but historically there were issues that we ran into, a lot, so field maintenance, mine.
So, just, I guess, let me know if you feel like we need to, I'm sure you would, but that's just why I haven't had any reports, just to do.
Maintenance sounds like a really good one to me.
Yeah, I mean, if we.
Yeah.
And I, I mean, I know, it's Tim Shannon.
Yeah, Tim, he's the new grounds guy, right?
That took his place and I've actually been dealing with him for a year now. He took over for.
For Carl.
Carl. I deal with him over at Blueberry.
Sure.
Cause I run the, kind of oversee the courtyard, of course, with Marie Pratt, but getting, making sure that we get the things we need in there. And he seems very responsive and.
Yeah.
On top of it, it, we just have to kind of sit with him and maybe make him aware of some concerns or something, I don't.
But I think with the new fields coming on, it would be great for us to have an agreement.
Yeah. I mean, they, let's, let's not, I don't wanna say that they're not doing a great job. I think they're doing the best job they can do with the resources they have at the moment, you know, and, and obviously it's been a very, it was a very wet spring so far, so there's a lot of things contributing to the condition of the fields, but just a standard operating procedure would be really helpful so we know what they're going to do, they know what we're going to do, and we're not saying that they're not doing something if they're, you know, when they're supposed, when they're not supposed to be doing it, I guess, is, is where it is. So, that's, that's what I like to see happen there. Seal?
We have a meeting on May 5th at 7:00.
Okay.
Right across the hall in the.
Who's the chair of that, do you know?
Me.
Of Seal?
What, oh, you mean like for us or for the?
Who's the Seal chair?
John Allison.
Okay, Stella?
Yeah.
Stella, though?
I thought, so if you have a minute, it's me.
Did an email for that go out to everybody? Like, cause I know there was communication.
Yes, and it's all.
Okay, about the Seal meeting, okay.
Did it go out to everyone or only parents who have children who are?
No, it's everyone.
Yeah, it did, yeah.
I saw it.
Okay.
The only thing I would like to do is, when I look at our district website, I would like to see a very easy.
So, if you go right.
Place to find it.
It's here. It's under People Services.
All right. And are we done with Seal?
Yes.
Collaborative?
We are meeting on Wednesday.
Middle school working group, it's probably, I'm not gonna say defunct, but not working at the moment, but you'll re.
We're always working.
Re-convene soon?
It's here. Keep going.
Policy sub, we do have a policy for, for first reading. That policy is the wellness policy, policy section ADF. This policy was presented here for first reading and will be posted to the district's website for 30 days for public input and then we'll come back to the committee for approval and I think Diane posted it earlier today, so it's good to go.
This is one.
Okay. Well, either way, wellness policy's up there. This is a periodic review of the wellness policy and I will tell you that the policy subcommittee made no changes to the policy that was presented to us, which does not mean that changes were not made.
There were, I think there were a lot.
So, we, we just, we agreed with the wellness committee's recommendation, is what I meant to say. We got the redistricting committee update. I know you're meeting Thursday night?
Wednesday.
Wednesday night?
Wednesday.
Transportation review, we're gonna do next.
Are we?
Communications review.
First reading. Okay. Are we, are we talking about it or no?
No, we don't talk about it when it's first reading, I don't think.
You don't talk about it?
We can talk about it if you want to, but.
Usually not, not until we call it in.
Yeah, we usually get 30, we usually get public comments and then we make our amendments to it.
Oh, okay.
But if you want to.
Well, I just, I'm just looking at it to see who, kind of make sure these are being followed. When I look at some of the things that say that the school's discouraged withholding recess as a form of discipline or punishment. The recommendations for physical education are 150 minutes per week at the elementary students, which is actually 30 minutes per day, so I assume that's their recess. If they should be having physical activity during our indoor days, which we had a lot of this year, how are we making sure they're, they may not have to be physical, like, running around in a playground, but not sitting on the floor watching a TV show.
Well, they make a distinction between physical education and recess.
Well, elementary students should have at least 20 minutes a day of supervised recess, preferably outdoors. Encourage moderate to vigorous physical activity verbally through the provision of space and equipment.
I can bring that, Kim, to our administrative team to review it.
Yeah, I just feel like we should.
We also, there's state law, though, that says we can't go out when it's certain.
No, I get that, but.
But your question is how you.
Sitting on the floor, watching a TV show during, when you're supposed to have 20 minutes a day of.
That doesn't count.
I mean, that's, that doesn't give you 20 minutes of, of any sort of, you could walk around from a station to station in your classroom or play with your friends in the classroom versus.
Even a board game is better.
A board game, right. So, I'm just thinking about that. But physical education for 150 minutes per week is a, is a lot. Which, those two seem similar to me, B and E, because we're not doing 150 minutes of PE.
Well, that's the National Association for Physical Education recommendation, but they make a distinction, I guess. I think your recommendations.
I think we should bring this to the administrative team.
And then, and then I just had another general question, I guess, about the nutrition. Are we doing some sort of nutrition education in our elementary schools, especially elementary? Cause I know we have health classes in the middle schools, but not in the elementary schools, so where are we covering health and wellness in the current elementary law?
Yeah, and I was, can I piggyback, do you mind?
No.
You know, when, when Alex came and talked to us about the opiate epidemic that's, you know, went to the conference, I was kind of surprised that we weren't sort of more embracing of, you know, starting it earlier, because I think when you start talking to kids, you know, younger, it becomes natural for them to feel open and honest with talking to you, where if you wait until middle school.
They shut.
Yeah, I can tell you, middle schools are not exactly open if you haven't established those lines of communication. And it's the same with nutrition and, so if we start this health, you know, as part of even our science curriculum, I, I don't know, I know that we're jam-packed, but there has to be a way to sort of ease it in a little bit more than.
Integrate it into something somehow, because, yeah, I feel like wellness overall has been sort of put on the, not, not eliminated, but it's falling down to math and English and where, but if you're, if you're not well, you know, from a health perspective, then academics just don't even matter and, and, you know, you hear about the opiate crisis and everything and if we're not educating young, then who cares what, how they score on their math tests? So, I, if, I mean, we have such, I know the teachers are doing everything they can to fit everything that they need to into the day and I don't know where they'll find the time, but I, I feel like we have to find a way to somehow dedicate wellness, overall health into the curriculum.
Just to have it be like a natural thing for kids to talk about. I mean, I, you know, I watched my fourth grader, like, talk about body shaming issues in class and she didn't feel comfortable talking to, like, her teacher about it and that, to me, is crazy. Like, and I don't think that she's alone in that. I think that's, it's easy to become sort of too comfortable in our little bedroom community and think that it doesn't come here, but that's where you're most vulnerable.
We've been talking about combining the health, PE, but then it gets down to how much they're moving. Why don't I bring this to the administrative team and we'll put those issues on our agenda for discussion and then report back to you.
Yeah, I know I got feedback from my, I don't think the kids would take too well to PE being replaced by health.
But I mean, why can't we put this in ELA where they're writing about, you know, like, you know, food options and healthy choices and, or, you know, I mean, there's so many ways to integrate it through that it doesn't, and it doesn't have to be so, I don't know, we don't have to buy like a box curriculum and just having it be on the radar for teachers?
Yeah, and mindfulness, which is, I think, you know, stress management and anxiety, you know, there's so much now that kids are exposed to that they weren't before. Technology adds stress and anxiety and, and so.
We're making that curriculum for that on Friday.
For mindfulness, okay, is that the?
Social emotional type stuff.
Okay, perfect, perfect, good. And that, like, and they'll be training and PD, P's or whatever? Awesome, PD's and.
Yeah, it's when we decide where we're going with it and what we're gonna do for a curriculum and how we're gonna implement it, when and who and all that stuff, then whoever's doing that needs to be trained, but we're, we're moving in that direction. We put that loud and clear.
And then Liz, you went to Safe Houses, Rochelle Warren, is that right?
Yeah.
And is that just, do you know if that trickles down to elementary school? I know it's sort of, it starts from middle school, but is there a?
Um, I think they just like to start it in middle school, but they're very adamant and very good at getting people involved who immediately go, you know, immediate sixth graders, I believe, you know, to get the parents involved, so.
What is Safe Houses? I've heard about it, I just don't.
Um, it's a network of parents and they, we meet maybe like monthly and have people come in and talk about things going on with the kids, as well as making a promise that you will never serve alcohol to children in your house and, and always have a safe place for them to go if they're in a situation, so.
They brought Chris Heron in.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That was a, that was a really great speaker.
Yeah, he was fantastic. Just quickly, while on the topic of the opiate and Narcon, am I saying it right, came up? Is that, is that being talked about? Cause I.
Yeah, I've asked the high school to get an order from our physician to have it on hand.
Oh, good.
So, we did follow up.
It's an insurance policy and if it's, you know, not at risk to have, then I think it's good. All right, great.
We followed up on that.
Awesome, thank you.
Hopefully you never have to use it.
Right, but I would rather have it, exactly, awesome.
And have a kid expire.
Yep.
Yep.
Good.
All right, any communications sub? No, good, okay.
Nope.
Anything else? Any others?
Communication.
All right, we're moving on to the transportation vote. At the last meeting, we presented the transportation subcommittee's recommendation for the busing proposal. Included in your packet is the letter that is going to go out after we approve this or if we approve this tonight, I should say, to parents for registration. Registration is going to be on a first come, first served basis and there is, I think, included in this letter, although it was handed to us right before, that they will potentially be able to get a refund prior to the beginning of the school year.
So, this is a draft, so we're willing to accept any info you have, you did just receive it tonight, so don't hesitate to email me any suggestions.
Yeah.
We don't necessarily talk about refunds in here, but we most certainly will offer refunds to people, again, on a case-by-case basis, based on circumstances. We are trying to implement an online registration so that, again, to reduce the amount of paper associated to the process. This will be communicated electronically. The services will be for students at the, in Wolf Swamp, Glenbrook, Williams and the high school. We do not have busing at Blueberry and Center, so we will be sending this out to those families in those schools. And again, you can register online, you don't have to, but we do encourage it. If you don't register online through that option, the, the paper document will have to be printed and brought back in, filled, completed and returned.
So, I guess first I'll enter a motion on the transportation subcommittee's proposal.
I move on the recommendation of the transportation subcommittee that the school committee approve the proposal as presented. The proposal includes setting 2015-16 transportation fee to 225 for rider with a family cap of The proposal includes setting 2015-16 transportation fee to 225 per rider with a family cap of $4.50.
All right, so a second?
Second.
All right, a motion and a second discussion on the proposal. Michelle?
I have a question.
Sure.
You know, as it comes to more fruition, and I know I was a part of this, so, but I've, I've seen parents concerned that they're not going to get a seat. So how many seats, you know, do you estimate to be available, you know, do people have to panic and say, oh my God, I have to stay at my computer on Friday morning, you know, how is it going to work for them, I guess?
I don't, right now, we currently have about 200 students riding the bus.
Right.
We anticipate having available three buses, we don't necessarily need three buses for the high school, but that would accommodate up to 150 students. Two buses for Glenbrook, which would be 100 students, and one bus for Williams, which would be 50 students, and one bus for Wolf Swamp would also be approximately 50 seats. Our goal, obviously, is to accommodate all the requests, but not knowing with the change of expanding it to Williams next year, how many students will be interested in riding. Based on current interest at Glenbrook and in the high school, we will not exceed that capacity, so.
You should have enough space, is what you're saying.
We should have enough space.
Okay, and that I know went into the kind of formula, but I can see, you know, if someone was on the outside and they saw this.
Yes.
I would not go to work on Friday, June 26th, if I needed a bus ticket and, you know, so.
Yeah, I don't expect there to be a huge rush, I don't, you know, again, unless there's a huge expansion of the interested families that don't currently ride.
Right.
I don't see there being an issue. But again, until we get the registrations, we won't know that for sure.
Right, and I mean, I would, if you have this influx, we get this influx, we'll look at it again.
Yeah, we'll have to come back and have a discussion about where do we go?
Right.
You know, do we look to add a bus or not?
Right, or if there's no one on the Williams bus, because no one's interested, then we can free that up for.
Consolidate it again, like we're doing this year.
Okay.
I mean, that's, I think that's like the beauty of the proposal in a sense, is that, you know, before, we were trying to like meet every single need that we could possibly think of, you know, and create this sort of one-size-fits-all solution, but, you know, I think what we learned, and, you know, and obviously you were part of those conversations, is just that, you know, it's impossible to tell who's going to utilize the service. We know that we have interest from some families, you know, over off of Western Drive and Severn, over into, you know, Ely Road. We know that we have an existing pool of people who utilize the service, so, you know, without really trying to like expand it to a point where it's unaffordable and, you know, beginning to cost us more, you know, money, and we're not seeing the ridership.
Right.
You know, we have the option here of consolidating, we have the option of reevaluating and adding service, but I think this is a really important first step for this committee in trying to expand that service. And I think, you know, like, my perspective on it is that if we see that there is a huge interest in ridership, then, you know, I'm supportive of continuing to add buses, even though Tom's not happy I said that.
His face is.
It's true, I mean, it's true, because, you know, like, that's, that's the public telling us that they want this service, but, you know, right now, I don't, I don't think we have a reason to believe, just based off of, you know.
Historical ridership.
Historical ridership and.
There's not been that demand.
And even, even, you know, I don't like to go off of anecdotal evidence, but anecdotal evidence that it's, you know, I think the demand is going to be met.
Right.
So.
I mean, would it hurt to put a survey out, just now that we know, I mean, because before we talked about it, but we didn't know what it was going to look like, so how could people answer? But now, knowing this, could we like get a little ahead of it?
I mean, getting them to sign up and enroll is technically a survey.
Well.
A what?
When we ask them to enroll in busing, we're actually asking them if they want it.
Right, but I see people, you know, and not a lot, but that I sense that they're worried, so if we take a survey and we say, so far we only have, you know, 50 people concerned and are interested.
Yeah.
Then they can be at ease before then, or, I mean, it's just, if it's easy to send out, I know you put out Survey Monkey fairly easily, if we say, you know, this is what we're talking about, let us know if you're interested, it's going to be this, this is just an interest level type survey, then we, I mean, it's an extra step.
We're committed to get this out next week.
Okay.
So, I mean, when we presented this two weeks ago, we said registration would be the first week of May, so.
Oh, okay.
Trying to get a survey out.
Oh, this is the deadline, June 26th.
Yeah, June 26th is the deadline.
Got it, okay.
Our role is to send this electronically out next week.
Right, I'm sorry.
To start the process, and have a good seven weeks' worth of time for parents to register.
Okay.
So we can update you as to what we're seeing for responses at our meetings, to let you know if we're seeing a large influx or a higher demand than what we've seen in the past.
Or will people get like, you're in? You know what I mean? That's what, I think that's what I want for them, is to not worry until whenever that they're going to get a seat on the bus.
Yeah, we'll have to look at that, then, a way to maybe communicate.
Yeah, that's a good point.
It's going to be hard, so we have to balance those that we legally have to transport to those that we don't.
Right.
And again, it might not, we might not know that answer until, until the process is closed, but again, if we're not exceeding capacity, then we'll be able to meet everybody's expectations, hopefully.
Do we know who we legally have to transport?
Well, yeah, that would be anybody who's in kindergarten through sixth grade, who lives more than two miles from their school.
So technically, we already know how many people that is?
We technically know, they don't all sign up for it, correct.
So you know that that's the maximum?
Correct.
What's that number?
And again, that's not, yeah, it's probably less than, again, right now it's about 130 students or so that we have.
Legally have to.
That we legally have to.
And of that, I think we have, what, a total ridership of what, around 200?
200 this year.
So, you know, even if all of them choose to ride, plus the additional, you know, the additional 100 or so people that we could expect, we still have enough capacity.
And all of those are in your elementary, middle schools, that's no high school students that are in that category, so we have 200 seats to accommodate those 130 students that we currently have to legally transport.
So, any other questions or comments or discussion? All right, I've seen none, I guess I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously, great. Finally, moving on to the approval of warrants.
I move that the school committee approve the warrant batch number 2200 of the school lunch fund FY15 dated May 1st, 2015, in the amount of $77,134.
A motion and a second, all those in favor? Motion carries.
Lastly, I move the school committee approve the warrant batch number 2830 of the general fund FY15 dated May 1st, 2015, in the amount of $333,743.73.
All right, a motion and a second, all those in favor? Motion carries. All right, there is no consent agenda, there are no minutes, there is an executive session planned, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session.
I move that the school committee adjourn to executive session for the purpose of